Good afternoon, everyone. Good to see you. We're going to get started with today's policy session of the Phoenix City Council. I count enough people, so we do have a quorum. So let's get started. Today's meeting will begin with council information and follow-up requests. Does any member of this council have information or follow-up requests? Councilman DeCiccio, you want to get started? Go ahead, please.
I do. Thank you, Mayor. I've got a few things going on this week. Matter of fact, and for those that are watching this, this is taped delayed in many instances, so whatever date I come up with may have already occurred because of the tape delay. But tomorrow, on Wednesday, February 25th, we're going to have a public meeting to discuss changes to Seventeenth Avenue and Pecos Road. The Pecos Road Action Group has been a phenomenal group to work with. It's a group of cyclists trying to find ways to make bike safety, cycling safety for people and for cars safer on the roads. And so they've come up with some ideas we're going to be presenting to the overall group. There was a working group, about five or six individuals, and those recommendations are now going to move to the larger group, which is about 125. That's going to be coming up tomorrow. They're also going to be working on long-term planning with the City of Phoenix. They're going to be working with our city to come up with other ideas of how to make biking safer in our community. Then, this Saturday, and I have not practiced, and I've got to tell you a funny story about this, but the Awatuki Pony League has asked me to throw out the first pitch.
Oh, wow.
The Awatuki Little League just did theirs last week. But I was, there was about 700 individuals, probably closer to 800 individuals at the time, a couple of years ago, and most of the fathers knew me, part of the Awatuki Little League, and they asked me to throw out the first pitch. And they said, one of the individuals says, "Whatever you do, do not hit our sound system," which was way away. Well, sure enough, I was never that good in baseball. Played football and wrestling and some other things like that. But I threw the ball, it hit their sound system, and I heard this, "Oh, my gosh, he hit the sound system." To make matters worse, I was taking the kids to school the other day. One of the boys that was in the car, was being the shuttle, and one of our neighbors, and I told the girls, I said, "Hey, girls, I'm going to be throwing out the first pitch at Pony League." And they go, "Hey, that's great, Daddy. How great is this? That's so much fun." The boy turns and says, "Well, don't hit the sound system this time, Mr. DeCiccio."
No way.
That really did happen. Ethan, he was such a good kid, and that deflated it with my children. They thought I was this great baseball player, and now they're thinking, "Wow, Ethan doesn't think he's that good." But either way, that's going to be on Saturday, February 28th. It's going to be at Kyrene Akimall Middle School. And then on Saturday, February 28th, the Kyrene Community Bike Safety Event is going to be at Kyrene de la Sierra between 8:00 and 11:00 a.m. So I'm going to try and juggle both of those. I don't know how that works. Then we're going to be taking the bike safety event from the southern part of the district to the northern part of the district, to the Madison Community Bike Safety Event, and that's going to be on March 7th. And it's going to be between 12:00 and 4:00 p.m. at Madison Number One Elementary School. Under all circumstances, call my office, get the information, (602) 262-7491. There's going to be approximately 300 bike safety helmets that are going to be donated out at each of those events. So call my office and see if you can qualify for one of those. We want to make sure that children are safe on the street, they're safe on their bikes, and that people get to enjoy the great experience of living in Arizona and especially Phoenix. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Nowakowski.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just really want to thank all those individuals that made the NFL experience in downtown great, and we have a piece of that NFL experience in right downtown Phoenix at Margaret Hands Park, where we're going to have the rock climbing wall actually at Margaret Hands Park. So that's that Grand Canyon experience. So I really want to thank the Hands Park Conservancy for advocating and making it all possible, and to our Parks Department for helping along that way. The other thing is downtown, and thanks to Councilmember Gallegos for getting the Paygo USA in downtown Phoenix. Basically, it's paid by phone parking at our meters in downtown Phoenix, and what a great way to park in downtown Phoenix now by using your smartphones. We encourage everyone to download the app and make sure that you use it as much as possible. And also, we have Coffee with the Cop in Maryville, the Estrella Precinct, on Wednesday, March 4th, at 9:30 a.m. at the Adam Diaz Senior Center. That's at 4115 West Thomas, and we invite everybody to come on down. It's really important to give that input and to meet the officers from the Estrella Mountain Village precinct. The other thing, too, is I want to thank all those individuals that came out last Friday to the moving the park at head at a school. Turned out really nice, and we had over 400 people out there, and it was a great fundraiser for the school. So thank you all for participating. That's it. Vice Mayor.
Gallego. Councilman Gallego.
Thank you. We want to welcome Gateway Mountain Park Health Clinic to District 8 and congratulate them on their successful grand opening last Friday. Also want to congratulate several school board members and the East Lake Park community for hosting a great 2015 Black History Month education celebration. And we want to thank the Human Relations Commission, which last night voted to support the city looking at an equal pay policy, very timely after the Oscars sparked a lot of discussion of that particular issue. I wanted to invite people to our next office hours in Levine on March 15th from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. at Chavez Library. And also invite people to the ground part, we're doing a groundbreaking for a dog park, it says, our Chavez, and the committee planning meeting will next be March 5th at 6:00 p.m. also at Chavez Library. So we hope people who are interested in both those areas will join us, and thank you very much.
Councilman Gates.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I want to thank everyone who came out to the Coffee with the Cop events last week up in District 3. There was, the Black Mountain meeting was up at Times Square Restaurant, and the Desert Horizon meeting was at Coco's at PV Mall. So we're kind of running between the two of them, but great turnout. Always appreciate when our residents get out and take that opportunity to spend time with our officers. I'll be out this Thursday, February 26th, at the meeting of the North Mountain Business Alliance. They're doing great things. They're over in that Nineteenth Avenue and Peoria area, part of the North Mountain redevelopment area that Councilwoman Williams and I have been working on. So that's going to be from 11:30 to 1:00 at 1951 West North Lane. We'll have a big announcement at that meeting. Also, my March Coffee Chat meeting will be on March 10th from 7:30 to 8:30 at the Original Breakfast House, which is Long North 32nd and has been named by Yelp as one of the very best breakfast restaurants in the city of Phoenix. So we're excited about that. And then staying with the 32nd Street theme, we'll be having our bike ride and festivities on March 21st, Saturday, March 21st. We'll have a car seat check, bike rodeo, bike giveaway, and a helmet check, 8:00 registration, 9:00 bike ride. And we'll have community booths running from 10:00 to noon. And Mayor, we are trying to get those grid bike share bikes up to North 32nd, because we'd love to have people in northeast Phoenix get some exposure to those. And then also, we have budget hearing meetings that we've scheduled Wednesday, April 1st. We'll be doing one with Councilman Valenzuela at Sunny Slope Community Center, 7:30 in the morning. So if you want to talk about budget first thing in the morning, that's the place to come. And then on March 8th, actually, I think that should be April 8th, I apologize, with Vice Mayor Waring. We will be doing that one at the Paradise Valley Community Center from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Additional council members with comments? Councilman Williams, please.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I have a question for staff. Do you send out notifications to all the grocery stores that April 1st, the food tax expires, so that we make sure that nobody gets charged beyond that date? Or will you?
Mayor, Councilwoman Williams, I believe that we do, but I will verify what our notification is about the expiration of the food tax.
Thank you. I have some thank yous. I'd like to thank Susan Edwards, participants and city staff from several departments for the Well-Attended Neighborhoods Connect Summit held this past Saturday. The day was full of interactive activities to get neighborhoods involved and active. It was a job well done, so thank you, Susan. I also want to thank the volunteers and the Sister Cities Commission for such a successful Chinese week. We had so many events and so many, I went to the one event, and there must have been 20 school buses there. There were kids of all ages, and they were having a great time, and it was wonderful to see. And I also want to thank everyone who supported Gabriel's Angels. Just let you know, we got the blue ribbon, so your contribution made a difference, so thank you very much. Coming up this Friday, the 27th, is the District 1 Breakfast at the Deer Valley Airport. Our speaker is Chris Camacho, President and CEO of the Greater Phoenix Economic Council. And then Saturday, we have the Safety Arts and Food Drive Festival at Metro Center with Washington Elementary School District, Metro Center, and St. Mary's Food Bank from noon to 4:00 this Saturday. So we'll be giving away free bike helmets. We have raffles, bike rodeo, car safety check, and we are asking everyone if they can to bring a can of food to support St. Mary's Food Bank. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Council. Other members of the council? Comments? Councilman Pastore, please.
District 4 is in full swing of community events and cleanups. Last week, as Councilwoman Williams has stated, Neighborhood Connect Summit was hosted this Saturday, which connected all our districts, and it was a fun and exciting event. So thank you, Susan, and also the team. This weekend, we have the 28th Annual Coronado Home Tour and Classic Car Show on Sunday, March 1st, from 10:00 to 4:00. Next weekend, we have the Melrose Seventh Street Fair from 11:00 to 7:00, which also features the District 4 Bike Rodeo and Helmet Giveaway. So please join us. And then on the western side of our district, Golden Gate Community Center is holding a family health fair from 9:00 to 1:00 p.m., and they will have basic health checks for kids and immunization, as well as basic health check, hypertension screening, and glucose testing for adults. I also want to mention that this week is the end of the Torazo exhibit. It's from 10:00 to 2:00 here in City Hall, and March 13, we'll be having a photography exhibit. We have great news as of right now, and hopefully we will win this award. We need everybody in the community to be participating in it. We have been nominated for the National Medal for Museums and Library Services. We won a 30 finalist. 10 final winners will be given medals. We need for the community to share your story about the impact the library has made on your life. And you can go to IMLS, they have a Facebook page, so please write any story that you have had, how it's impacted your life, your children's life, your family's life, everything. The library is also launching an online high school. Those that are 19 and older that would like to get their high school degree, we have, that's being offered at the library. And that's everything I have currently. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Councilman Valenzuela.
Thanks, Mayor. I'd like to start with something that we are calling VIP, Violence Impact Project, on 27th Avenue, predominantly District 5. This has been a troubled area for a long time, and for quite a while now, the District 5 team has been meeting with many, many departments for collaborative effort between human services, prosecutor's office, NSD, of course, our police department, our fire department, several others involved here to deal with just the different issues, crime, blight. I mean, it's just really been an issue. It is one of the places where you'll have the most committed neighborhood leaders, so I really appreciate the neighborhood leaders that have been stepping up, of course, the business leaders as well, community leaders, I think. I think everyone can be just sort of under that umbrella. And of course, all of these departments have been represented, you know, in this particular area, but having us all together in the same room talking about this collaboration brings us to this point, and we are not, you know, we're not finished with this effort, even putting it together, but we are going to be having a meeting, a public meeting at the Helen Drake Senior Center, which is on 27th Avenue, about the halfway mark between Glendale and Northern, this Thursday, February 26th, at 6:30 p.m. Come on out and be part of that conversation, see what we have planned so far. Of course, let's get your fingerprints on it, and I'm speaking to all of those that are in the community. We'd love to, it's all about, you know, public participation, public input. It's why we are all doing these jobs with this responsibility. So that's incredibly important. I'll move on to the next item here. We are supporting Phoenix Startup Week right now, happening right downtown Phoenix all week long. This is all about entrepreneurship. I want to thank Mayor Stanton, who I was pleased to share the stage with yesterday morning as we kicked off Phoenix Startup Week. Every incubator, coworking space, accelerator, you know, higher education institution, all, many entrepreneurs are in this space and will continue to share ideas, all of us working towards the same goal of making Phoenix the place for entrepreneurs. Chase Bank, I want to thank Chase for sponsoring it. In fact, yesterday, just after the mayor and I gave the opening remarks, Chase Bank announced a $175,000 grant to Arizona State University to help with women entrepreneurs, which is obviously, you know, that's big for all of us. So I think Chase definitely deserves recognition for doing that, as well as ASU and Sky Song, and they're obviously doing, you know, some great things, so they are definitely deserving of that grant, I truly believe. And you'll start hearing more about 5K, 5Y. 5K, 5Y, I believe that if we continue to support this entrepreneurial ecosystem right here in the city of Phoenix, we will benefit with 5,000 new enterprises in the next five years. And that's we as a community, we as a city, especially, you know, speaking of the city, we have some very, we're very fortunate to have some servant leaders here on city staff with our city manager, Ed Zirker, also Paul Blue, Chris Mackey, Hank Marshall, Phil Bradstock, and many others who are just focused on entrepreneurship, and it's just very exciting. So you can go on Twitter, check out the hashtag, #YesPhoenix, or hashtag Startup Phoenix. It wouldn't be hard to find, and, you know, come on out and take in some of this good stuff that's happening here. Last Saturday, I had the opportunity to attend a GCU basketball game. John Truheal, our Public Works Director, and I had an opportunity to share a very important message on Reimagine Phoenix. The goal is to divert the, you know, all of this waste from our landfill by 40% by 2020. It's the, so that's the initiative that John has us all focused on, and so we were able to share that message with a media interview, as well as, you know, to the well-attended crowd there at GCU. So that was also important for our city, and it's important for GCU to, you know, of course, give them the recognition that they deserve to step up. They are one of many partners for this Reimagine Phoenix initiative. Lastly, you know, this is bittersweet, you know, it's sweet because I support the people that, especially those that work to help this mission that we have with the District 5 team and, of course, the city. But Kelly Dalton, my chief of staff of the last year, is moving out into the private sector. This is her final week, and Kelly has spent eight years with the city of Phoenix, with a council member at the time, Greg Stanton, Mayor Phil Gordon, Mayor Stanton, was working with, you know, city departments. This is a better city because of Kelly's work ethic and, you know, her intelligence and everything else that, all the good things that she brings to an organization. So I want to thank Kelly for her efforts and her contributions, not only to the District 5 team and the council District 5, but to the entire city, and I, you know, want to say congratulations. She is going to certainly shine out in the private sector as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Other comments by members of the council? Councilman Nowakowski.
Mayor, yeah, I'd like to ask staff, next time there's an event within District 7, if we can get some heads up or notification. I mean, the Phoenix Startup Space is a great program that we all support. I didn't hear about it until right now, so maybe next time, if we can get invited, that would be great to support our entrepreneurship within our own district. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think on Startup Week, it is 130-plus events covering the entire Valley of the Sun. So the good news is there'll be plenty of other events throughout the week celebrating the entrepreneur. I think there are going to be up to 2,000 or so participants at the events throughout the Valley of the Sun. So it's a really exciting series of events, and Jonathan Cottrell's done an outstanding job. Other comments or questions by members of this council? All right, I'll just add one. Susan Edwards is here. Great job on Neighborhoods Connect. That was a truly awesome event on Saturday. You brought the right people to the table, neighborhoods from all across the city, young and veterans, we'll say. No, Richard Ray's young. No, he's not a veteran. No, no. All ages were actively involved, and it was great to see the lively conversation, people passionate about the future of the city, passionate about the future of neighborhoods. So I know you worked a ton to get it to that point, and a job well done on Neighborhood Connects. When's the next one? Let us know, when you're ready. Let us know. What are you going to do for an encore at this point? Within a year or so? All right, good. Truly an awesome job, and I know it was a partnership with the city as well, but you did it on your own. This was not a city program. This was you and the other leaders. Neighbors Connect, congratulations on putting a wonderful, wonderful event together on Saturday. All right, with that, we're going to move on to the remainder of our agenda. Next item, do we have a consent agenda, Vice Mayor?
We do not.
Do we have a call for an executive session?
We do. Mayor, in accordance with the properly posted notice and agenda, I move that the City Council, pursuant to Arizona Revised Statute, Section 38-431.02.A, meet an executive session on Tuesday, March 3rd, 2015, at 1:00 p.m. in the East Conference Room, 12th floor of the Phoenix City Hall, 200 West Washington Street, Phoenix, Arizona.
Second. Good motion. We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Next, any reports by our city manager? I know we have a detailed general fund five-year status update a little bit. Anything else, Mr. City Manager?
No, Mayor.
All right. Next item on the agenda, because there's been a lot of activity and interest, I want to make sure that we get regular updates before this body on the actions by our professional staff as it relates to the FAA flight path procedure. So the next item is an update on our FAA flight path issues. Mr. City Manager, maybe you can introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor, and the members of the city council. We've been working tirelessly to address the flight path changes made unilaterally by the FAA in September of last year. We know that many residents of our city are struggling with new noise in their neighborhoods, noise that was not there before the FAA's action of September 18th. At your direction, we have communicated to the FAA the position that the current status quo is unacceptable. Acting Aviation Director Tammy Fisher and her staff have been working with you regularly to communicate the status on the issue. As you know, we continue to work several different fronts, including meeting with the FAA, legislators in Washington, D.C., and with our industry groups, all to continue to say clearly, this situation has to change. In fact, today, Assistant Aviation Director Chad Makovsky is in Washington doing just this. And at your direction, we will continue to make sure that we're heard loud and clear in Washington, Seattle, Los Angeles, here in Phoenix, and wherever we meet with the FAA. So Ms. Fisher, Ms. Takata are going to give an update on where we are and where we are headed to make this situation right. Ms. Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. Zirker. Before I begin, I would like to introduce Mr. Tom Cornell, who's with Landmark Brown, and he is an airspace consultant who is supporting us through this process. As Mr. Zirker mentioned, as you know, for hundreds of households, life changed dramatically on September 18th, when they suddenly woke up and could no longer enjoy their backyards or sleep peacefully as a result of the flight pass that the FAA implemented without any public notice. We've continued to hear from neighborhoods, more than 4,000 complaints now from over 140 households, and all of those have been transmitted to the FAA. I have a letter here with me today that I just received last week from a resident of one of the historic neighborhoods, and I'll summarize it. It's a little bit difficult to read, but it really sums up the situation. The resident says, "I've lived in the historic neighborhood for over 30 years. It's filled with friendly people who lend each other a helping hand, sometimes even mowing each other's lawns, I understand." He says, "My days of working outside, gardening, or relaxing are now filled with jet engines roaring overhead. Sunday is the most restful day. Are now Grand Central Station overhead. This must stop. Since that time, and with the direction of the mayor and council, aviation staff has been acutely focused on this issue for achieving relief for the community. Today, we're here to provide you with an update on what we have been doing with the community, what we have been doing with the FAA, and how we have been implementing the legislative strategy that we presented and discussed in December. In December, the city council directed staff to conduct community outreach and noise monitoring, and to request that the FAA return to the former flight paths that were in place before September 18th. In January, we held three community meetings, one at Caesar Chavez High School, one at Metro Tech High School, and one at the Phoenix Art Museum. Nearly 300 people attended these meetings, and the point of the meetings was really to document the community's concerns, ask them for ways that we could improve our communications with the community, and to ask them what their ideas are to improve the situation. We're also available and willing to attend any other community meetings. We did make a presentation at the Willow Community Meeting and the Grant Neighborhood Block Watch Community Meeting, as well as participated in a Glendale City Council workshop. I'm asking the public to invite us to your community meeting so that we can provide whatever information is desired and answer any questions. It will come as no surprise to anyone that the greatest concerns of the community were the quality of life as impacted by noise, also a decrease in home values. Residents feel that people will begin to move out of the airport, out of the area, and home buyers will steer away from the area, causing home values to decline. They also believe that top item on the list is wealth transfer slash economic, and that really is about a feeling that community welfare has been traded off for economic benefit to the airlines. And of course, they're concerned that there was a lack of transparency and disclosure in implementing the new flight path procedures. Some of the suggestions for improved communications have already been implemented. We've created a dedicated page on skyharbor.com. Community members felt like it was too hard to navigate to the information, so we have improved that. We've also added Spanish translation on the website. We are using social media more and more, not only Facebook and Twitter, but also Nextdoor. And we also heard that some people want to continue to receive traditional communications, direct mailings, items in the city council newsletters, as well as city services bills. We have developed this fact sheet, which is a brief summary of the issue, and also a listing of where information can be found, and that is both in English and in Spanish in the reverse side. Some of the suggestions were not surprising and some very surprising. Of course, the community overwhelmingly would like to see the airport return to the former flight paths, which we have requested from the FAA. But they also made suggestions for improvements to the flight path to mitigate the impacts, and also made suggestions about more dramatic changes, such as moving the airport or sending flights to Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport. Thank you. So those are very alarming and definitely create a risk to the state's biggest economic engine. Still, it's important that we understand the community's concerns, the full range of the community's concerns. A summary of these meetings has been posted on skyharbor.com, and we have a very large report, about 400 pages, that also documents the concerns, and that the concerns, and that will also be posted on our website. We also deployed noise monitoring out in the community between February 2nd and February 12th. The locations are shown on this map, and they are based on public feedback received at the community meetings. The pink dots indicate four longer-term locations where the noise monitors were in place for three to four days. The blue dots indicate another 33 locations where monitors were placed out in the community for a shorter duration, typically about two hours. Our noise consultants are compiling this data, and that should be ready for public review in March at additional community meetings. We are also working with a, um, a technology provider to develop a web-based tool that the public can use to get flight track information at, at their own desktop. This screenshot is from Boston Logan Airport. When you click on the airplanes, you see that the green lines are arriving airplanes and the blue lines are departing airlines. When you click on those airplanes, you will get information about the airline, the type of equipment they're operating, the origin and destination of the aircraft, the elevation of the flight, and the speed of the aircraft. This application comes from Exelis, which is the same company that provides the FAA radar data that our aviation staff uses to create flight track maps. We are testing the application and making sure that it works properly, and we hope that this tool can be ready for residents to use by the end of March or early April. I have heard that some community members may be developing their own tool, and that is certainly fine, but we hope that this tool will be a useful thing for residents who would like to get information on their own, without having to call aviation staff. Secondly, I wanted to update you on what we have been doing in terms of working with the FAA. In December, we received direction from the mayor and council to request all FAA documents, and also to provide city internal documents related to this issue. We have, were asked to request that the FAA return to the old flight path before September 18th. We wanted to ensure that the FAA would consider both routes departing to the northwest as well as the southwest, and to include cargo and helicopter operations. And we were asked to return to council for additional direction on any future proposed flight changes. On December 22nd, we did submit a Freedom of Information Act request to the FAA. It was very broad, asking for every communication, every email, every document related to the implementation of these flight path procedures. It was immediately acknowledged by the FAA. They subsequently estimated a fee for their search time for this expansive request for documents to the tune of $10,000, but nearly $10,000, but we were successful in getting that waived. We requested an early release of some of the technical data to help us in evaluating alternatives for this situation. Unfortunately, that request was denied. The FAA has indicated it will take six months before they can release the requested documents, but we will continue to push for that to happen as quickly as possible. In January, we gathered and compiled all of our internal city documents and transmitted those to the city manager's office to make them available for the city council to review. On December 23rd, the city manager sent a letter to the FAA administrator requesting that the FAA return to the prior flight paths that were in place before September 18th. In January, I was fortunate to be able to accompany Mayor Stanton and Congressman Ruben Gallego in a meeting with the FAA Administrator, Michael Huerta, and we asked for the FAA's commitment to help us resolve this problem in Phoenix and describe the impacts it's had to our neighborhoods. On January 22nd, the administrator responded that the FAA would not revert to the prior flight paths, but did recommend convening a technical working group in Phoenix to look at alternatives to mitigate the community impacts of the new flight procedures. And on February 17th, we prepared and filed a legal protest indicating that the entire process leading up to the implementation of these new flight procedures in September was flawed, that there was improper consultation with the city and historic preservation agencies, and that the process needed to be redone. On March 14th, we expect the FAA to be updating the House and Senate Appropriations Committees as directed by Congress. We have convened the FAA Technical Working Group. I appreciate the appointment of former Congressman Ed Pastor to represent the city of Phoenix. His work on the working group has been very effective. He is being supported by Assistant Aviation Director Chad Makovsky, as well as Tom Cornell, our airspace technical consultant. There have been two meetings held. The first meeting was an orientation and listening session. I do appreciate that several council members took the time to come and speak to the group, along with the city manager and the city, um, the city's historic preservation officer. The second meeting was really a discussion of the process and the scope of work and the alternatives. The FAA has agreed to look at both the Grand Avenue flight paths as well as the Levine area, and the group is set to meet again on March 9th. I thought it was important to show the, you mayor and council, the process that has to occur in order to change flight paths. This is a long list, which is very technical, and that's why Tom Cornell is here to help me, in case you have any questions about that. And these are, in fact, all the steps that were, um, that the FAA went through before the flight path procedures were implemented in September of 2014. Unfortunately, these steps and the documents associated with these processes were not shared with the aviation management team or the public. They were kept internal to the FAA and a group of technical stakeholders. These are all the documents that we've requested, the documents associated which, with each of these steps, which involved design modeling, operation support, um, air nav products review, as well as NEPA, the Environmental Protection Act review. These are the documents that we've requested. This is the basis of our protest, and this is why we argue that the process needs to be redone. We're continuing to work with Congress and other federal agencies. I mentioned our meeting with the FAA Administrator. We continue to keep that dialogue going. We also had the opportunity to meet with Senator Jeff Flake. We asked, briefed him on the issue we're having in Phoenix and asked for his support. He has since issued a letter to the FAA Administrator acknowledging the, the impacts that these new flight procedures have had on Phoenix neighborhoods, and asking that the FAA work with the city of Phoenix towards a mutually beneficial resolution. We're also ready to facilitate meetings for council members who may be attending the National League of Cities in March, and would hope to continue the advocacy for Phoenix in Washington. I know that Congressman Ruben Gallego is also working on a letter from House Representatives, and we would hope to have multiple members of our Arizona delegation sign on to that letter. As Mr. Zerker mentioned earlier, Assistant Aviation Director Chad Makovsky is in DC as we speak. He met with American Airports Council International this morning, and also is meeting with the American Association of Airport Executives. He is working with them to develop an industry position on Phoenix's behalf. AAAE, American Association of Airport Executives, has agreed to write a letter, and we would ask for that to be signed by Airports Council International, as well as the Gateway Airports Council, which is a, a group under the U.S. Travel Association. Also, we are continuing to work with the Advisory Council on Historic Preservation at the federal level, and our state historic preservation officer will be visiting with them next week in person in Washington DC. Our Washington representative also will be working with our Arizona delegation to develop some alternatives for upcoming FAA reauthorization. We would like to ask or introduce language into the reauthorization bill that would remove the opportunity for the FAA to implement such significant changes under a categorical exclusion, which is one of the options under the environmental review process that requires no public consultation and no public notice. We also would like to remove the language from Public Law 112-95 that encourages the FAA or requires the FAA to seriously consider not implementing new flight paths in the footprint of the old flight paths. If we are unsuccessful in getting those two things removed from the public law, we would like to introduce language that requires the FAA to do some public outreach or public notice, even when a categorical exclusion is used. And we would like the FAA to revert to the prior flight paths and redo the process as it was dramatically flawed. We intend to have additional community meetings in March. I believe it's the third week in March, once we have all the noise data ready to review and, and publish for a public review. We intend, as I mentioned earlier, to get the flight track monitoring software up and running and ready for the public to use. We will continue our participation in the FAA working group and continue our legislate, our legislative strategy. Mayor and council, I want to assure you that we completely understand the tremendous impact these flight paths have had on our Phoenix neighborhoods, and the risk of undoing what we have worked years and years and years to do to redevelop particularly our downtown core, and the millions of dollars that we have invested into these neighborhoods to make them great places to live. You have my commitment that, and the commitment of the aviation department, that we will continue to stay focused on this issue. We will make available the extraordinary and, and necessary resources and time to see this matter through until it is, until it is resolved. And we will keep posting updates throughout the process to skyharbor.com with, on the dedicated page forward slash flight paths.
Excellent. Thank you very much for that report, Tammy. It should be noted that we owe a huge debt of gratitude to Congressman Pastor for willing to take on this responsibility to sit during very long meetings and numerous meetings to represent the interests of this community on that. That was really Councilman Nowakowski's idea. Councilman, thank you very much for suggesting Congressman Pastor uniquely positioned, only because of his former district, his unique experience and leadership on aviation issues throughout his time in Congress, but really the respect that he has by all of the affected, most affected areas. So, we were uniquely blessed to have Congressman Pastor to be in that position, and it should be noted that he is doing this pro bono. He is not asking for any money, and doesn't want it, and wants to do it for the good of, of the city that he represented in Congress. So, again, we owe him a huge debt of gratitude for, uh, for his leadership. I do have a couple of cards. I think the best thing to do is just take the, the cards and comments from the public, and then I'll turn it over to the council for questions, comments, or other ideas for our staff about the direction we should go on this very difficult and troubling issue. Bill Trumbo, did you just provide testimony on, on this item?
No.
You're gonna pass on this one? Brad Allmans, did you wish to speak on this issue? Brad?
Yeah, just a few words.
Okay, and then followed by Greta Rogers. I saw Brett Kleiman put a card in the issue. If you want to speak, it's up to you. You can decide after the first few speakers. Please.
Okay. One I wanted to bring to people's attention, the, the concept of regulatory capture. Wikipedia defines regulatory capture as a form of political corruption that occurs when a regulatory agency created to act in the public interest instead advances the commercial or special concerns of interest groups that dominate the industry or sector it is charged with regulating. Regulatory capture is a form of government failure. It creates an opening for firms to behave in ways injurious to the public. The agencies are called captured agencies. So, I'd like to refer you to the Wikipedia articles on regulatory capture, and also on federal aviation administration. I'd like to say that ultimately, this problem is based on the, the airline industry, or the aviation trans, air transport industry, Congress and the FAA working together, and instead of handing the problem off to a, a group of engineers and saying, "Do the right thing," they handed the problem off to a bunch of lawyers and said, "Sick 'em." And, uh, that's because the air transport industry isn't really interested in anything other than the air transport industry. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for taking time to come down. Greta Rogers, did you provide testimony on this item? And then, Mr. Kleiman, if you wish to provide testimony, that'll be the time. Otherwise, we've got your card in as a, an interested participant. Ms. Rogers?
Mayor and council, and people in attendance today, my name is Greta Rogers. I live in Owatuki, so I am not directly affected by this, or even indirectly affected by it. But this is wrong for people's, citizens' quality of life in the neighborhoods where they live, to be interrupted by oppressive noise, and also the outflow of fumes from these jets. I am in total support of the neighborhoods and businesses, or whoever collectively are fighting this situation. First of all, it never should have been done the way it was done, unilaterally, no communication. Flight paths, taking off and arriving in this city, since the airport opened, I believe in 27, it was probably about this big, take off, arrive, over the Salt River bed, which in the central part of the city, and to the east and the west of the central part of the city, is bounded by industrial or commercial, not by neighborhoods directly. There are some neighborhoods that are close and can hear the overflow of noise. But that is the logical flight path, and if this costs the commercial airlines a few pennies more per flight or arrival, so be it. They aren't starving to death, and they raise their rates with impunity. I want this stopped, and I want the representatives from this part of the city, and both senators in the Congress, to unilaterally and unequivocally support the citizens of Phoenix in this fight to get FAA to go back to their original flight path, which is least adverse against anyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rogers. Mr. Kleiman, did you wish to provide testimony on this item? Good to see you. Thanks for being here.
Good to see you as well. I'm not sure I can be as eloquent. I just, I have a couple of requests of the city council and city staff, that there has been mention made by the airport that all the communications have been forwarded to the city staff that the airport had with the FAA. I would like to have, request that those be made public for the members of the community to see that and be able to analyze that as well, and also to understand what the city stance is in retaining legal counsel to move forward. I appreciate the work that the working group is putting forward, but is there a time that the city has to actually retain that legal counsel to begin this process if we need to seek that type of injunction or remedy within courthouses? So, that request I would like to make of the city council to share that information and make sure it's happening, as well as all the emails and communications that have been sent to the city manager be made public as soon as possible as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I do believe that when we had a, a city council meeting on this issue, that issue was brought up, and we agreed to do so, but let's reaffirm that today, that any information that we provide from FAA and any information that we have, no need for a formal public records request, but, but we are provide, we are planning to make all of that information public. What is our timeline on, on making any information that we have internal, uh, public? FAA, I guess, said up to, up to six months. I hope they come in sooner than that, but, but what is our timeline?
Mayor, city council members, the information internal to the city of Phoenix was compiled through December 31st and made available on Jan, in January. Other documents have been posted on our website, but we're happy to regularly compile any internal communications, as well as letters that we're receiving from residents for public sharing.
Okay, so Brett, we'll consider that an additional request, but it's a well, point well made, and we, the commitment, I think unanimously with councils, we're gonna get this information out as soon as possible, and I appreciate your interest in it. And then we have And then we have retained outside counsel. Dan, if you want to mention who's the outside counsel who's advising us, assuming that doesn't, we're okay on that?
No, not at all. Mayor, members of council, we have retained the law firm of Kaplan &amp; Kirsch out of Denver, Colorado. And in fact, they have filed a protest on behalf of the city with FAA offices in both Los Angeles and Washington, D.C. on February 17th.
So Brent, we filed a legal protest with the FAA. It's not a lawsuit, but a legal protest. And that document, I think, is now publicly available and certainly Brent and others in the community are going to be very interested in the information we filed.
Absolutely. Mayor, members of council, that's over, I believe, 40 pages of documents along with exhibits representing almost 10,000 different properties within.
I'm sure Brent is asking, is that available electronically?
Oh. Mayor, yes, we will make sure that document's posted on skyharbor.com by the end of the week.
Okay, thank you so, thank you so much. Any additional members of the public here wish to testify on this update on the FAA flight path procedure issue? Okay, now I'll turn it over to members of the City Council. Councilwoman Nowakowski, you want to jump in, please?
You know, Mayor, District 7 has affected basically most of our district. I mean, we have the Levine area, that's an agricultural area where people have moved out to Levine area because they wanted a farm-style type of living, quiet, large lots. And all of a sudden, on September 18th, you have airplanes flying over Levine. I also represent the historic district. And all of a sudden, after September 18th, started getting calls from our historic portion of our district. Also represent the downtown area, people, business owners were saying, "The planes are flying a little lower. It's starting, we can hear them inside our businesses. What's going on?" One individual says, "Hey, is there a attack going on in downtown Phoenix?" No, it's a change of the path. The other areas are public housing that we have, where a lot of our public housing is also in the center of the downtown area. And we also have a lot of the areas of South Phoenix that are being affected with a lot of minority African-American Hispanic communities. So saying that, I feel that we as a community, we as a city, really need to step up and push this to its limits. It's sad that we're having a public request, a public records request, and we haven't received all that documentation. And it's taking up to six months or even plus to receive that. I think there's something wrong there. The other thing too is that we had this experience of the whole Sacred Heart area where there was four Hispanic neighborhoods that were just displaced. And I don't want that to happen with our historic district. I don't want that to happen within the Levine area. I don't want that to happen within the South Phoenix area. I think we really need to look into what we do as the City of Phoenix. We have this great process that was started back in 1998 where we have a master plan. We take it out to the community and we have the community actually vote on it. This next formal meeting that we're going to be having on the Fourth of March, we're going to actually bring the My Plan Phoenix to this council. And we're going to decide if we should carry it, we should move it on to the voters in August. But it's taken a lot of work. It's taken over a year of meeting with the community, talking about where we want our industrial parks, where do we want our residential areas, where we would like to have different amenities within the City of Phoenix place. It's a process that we go out and we work with the community. It's a process that we listen to the community. It's a process that we take out and the voters actually vote on it. And what the FAA did is they didn't take that into consideration. We had a plan that was voted in back in 2001, and they didn't take that into consideration. We took into consideration the placement of our airport, and we made sure that we planned smart, that we planned the runways right into an industrial park where it won't interfere with our historic neighborhoods, where it won't interfere with our minority communities, where it won't interfere with our agricultural communities. And I think we need to take all this into consideration. And I think when we go, I think we need to start a collaboration with other cities that are affected. I want to make it very clear to individuals that we're not against this next gen. I think it's a great way of using technology. It's a great way to saving fuel. But what I am against is the process that the FAA used during this, during this whole change of the pathway. I believe they should have taken it out to the community. They should have fine tuned it. And if they would have brought it out to the community, they would have listened to the concerns of the residents in our historic community, in our downtown community, in our agricultural community, in our minority community, and fine tuned it, we wouldn't be here today having this conversation. We wouldn't be threatening the FAA with a lawsuit. And I think that's where it's going to end up, folks, is that we're going to have to sue the FAA at the end of the day because I think we're just dragging this whole process out. I just really want to thank our Congressman Ed Pastor for accepting this challenge. The mayor and I were sitting down trying to figure out who would be the best person to represent all of those communities, the agricultural, the downtown, the historic, and the minority community. And the first person that popped in our minds was our Congressman Ed Pastor that has represented this area for years. And I think we made the best choice. Ed, we support all your advocacy and all your hard work on this committee, and hopefully we can make some changes. But if not, I think we need to take it to the ultimate and sue the FAA.
Thank you very much, Councilman. To be very specific, the proposal by the FAA to go along Grand Avenue, though well-intentioned, if it had been presented to you and the members of the community, it would have been obvious that that was a fatally flawed approach. Other members of this council that want to give any, Councilwoman Pastor, and then I'll come back to Vice Mayor.
I want to put it on the record. I met with several constituents last week, and they have many questions regarding communication between the Phoenix City Council and the community, community outreach and mitigation of noise concern, and questions for the FAA. And in particular, I want to talk about the community outreach and mitigation of noise concerns because I want this on the record. Community members have expressed concern that the outreach meetings conducted by Landrum &amp; Brown and the Phoenix Aviation Department last month did not provide a forum that enabled us to be heard, and that the results of the meetings, as reported by Landrum &amp; Brown, did not accurately reflect the community's concerns. Landrum &amp; Brown's stated purpose on its website includes assisting airports to calm community concerns and provide clear and persuasive arguments for proposed FAA actions, which has caused suspicion that Landrum &amp; Brown may not be acting in the community's best interest. And here are the three questions. What are the objectives of the community meetings conducted by Landrum &amp; Brown and the City Phoenix Aviation Department on January 20th, 22nd, 24th of 2015? Landrum &amp; Brown conducted a noise exposure map update published in June 2014 that did not take into account the pending flight path changes at Sky Harbor that were implemented three months later. Why has the City of Phoenix Aviation Department continued to employ Landrum &amp; Brown to conduct noise monitoring and community outreach when Landrum &amp; Brown's June 2014 noise exposure map update was deficient? What is the city's next step if Landrum &amp; Brown's noise monitoring does not exceed the FAA's guidelines? The other items that I want to put on record is I received an email this morning, and this neighborhood's a little bit away from Grand Avenue, but it's near. And on the record, it says, and I will get to, "I'm writing you this morning to reach out to inform your office concerning the obnoxious onslaught of flights departing Sky Harbor this morning. While getting ready for work this morning, I heard a great amount of air traffic from airplanes passing overhead." Which, however, this morning, they seemed to pass over more frequently and louder inside my home where no windows or doors were open. As I left my house headed south to 7th Avenue in Avalon, I witnessed an airplane headed northwest directly over my home at 9th Avenue and Thomas about 7:39. It is clear to me that this new unilateral flight path instituted by FAA is not improving. Rather, it continues to get worse each day. I realize our well-respected former Congressman Ed Pastor is working on this issue as a voice for Phoenix. We surely appreciate his experience and knowledge of politics in Washington. I ask you to please pass this morning's blatant deviation from the FAA disastrous next-gen designated flight path on Grand Avenue to those who are working to reverse what FAA has forced on us. This continues to be a pattern that even if they are to be on Grand, they're not staying on Grand. And one of the questions from several constituents are, "Are fines imposed on the airlines that do not abide by the flight paths?" Because what happens when they're not adhering to what their FAA is telling them to do and they're going off the flight path? And I know there's this little clause of safety. I want to know then if they're going off the flight path, what is the safety concern? Because this seems to be semantics back and forth, and it just needs to stop. If we're going to have to live with this currently right now, then let it, let it stay on the flight path. Because I witnessed an airplane, and I told Glenn Martin, on 7th Avenue, turning off right up of 7th Avenue. And so, I don't know, what, I guess where I'm at is, what do we need to do to send
Okay, so there was constituents that sent you that letter that you read from. So let's, to the best of our ability, let's try to answer those questions that the constituents that asked Councilwoman Pastor to present, as far as you know, the purposes of the public meetings that were held over the last few weeks. I think that was the first question.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Pastor, the objectives of the community meeting were really for us to listen and document three things. The concerns of the community, to make sure that we had a good understanding of what the dominant areas of concern were and that we were able to document that and post that in a public way for the public to see. The second thing is to be sure that we were hearing from the community different ways that we could improve our communications, to be sure that we were getting information out in a way that was comfortable to all members of the community. And then the third thing, to hear from the community any ideas they had, which the list that we had in the presentation was very short. There will be a much longer list posted on our website of ways that we can resolve the flight path issue. And as I mentioned, those solutions, those suggestions, those ideas that came out of the community meeting ranged dramatically. The consultant has prepared a 400-page document that will be posted on our website for the public to see, and that was the main point of that meeting. And also for us to be able to answer any questions that the community might have, and they did have plenty of questions across the range that aviation staff was there to try to answer. Secondly, on the noise exposure map update that was submitted to the FAA for review and approval in June of 2014, we established a steering committee and advisory group that the aviation team and the consultant worked with for a period of a couple of years in measuring the data, conducting a series of community meetings. And also participating on that steering committee was the local FAA tower manager. And in that process, information about these new flight procedures were not brought to the process. They were not shared and therefore not included with the noise exposure map update. We have consulted with the local airports district office, and they have indicated that we will, the noise exposure maps are a measurement of current conditions, which for our purposes was 2013, and then a projection of a five-year future condition. Obviously, our projection of the five-year future condition, having not been provided that information from the FAA, is flawed, and we will need to redo those noise exposure maps and resubmit them, the future forecast, resubmit them to the FAA for approval. Those noise exposure maps are done in accordance with federal regulations. They must be reviewed by the FAA and accepted by the FAA in accordance with their regulations, and then they become the official noise exposure maps for the airport, which define noise contours around the airport and would lead to qualifying properties for grant assistance or noise mitigation assistance. If the Landrum &amp; Brown noise monitoring process, both the temporary process, but in particular the noise exposure map process, does not meet FAA regulations, those maps will be rejected by the FAA, and we will need to resubmit them until they are accepted by the FAA in accordance with their regulations. Pertaining to your complaint about the flight paths deviating from the adopted route procedure, we also got that complaint at the Aviation Department, and our staff did confirm that a total of, I believe, six or seven flights did deviate dramatically from the flight path. Four of those flights were commercial aircraft, two of them were general aviation aircraft. And even though the FAA has indicated that they gave the air traffic controllers the directive back in October that they are not to deviate from those flight paths, we are seeing evidence that they continue to deviate from those flight procedures. Related to your question about fines, I believe that question was raised with the FAA administrator in our meeting in January, and the FAA administrator did indicate exactly as you suggested that for safety reasons, the FAA needs to allow the air traffic controllers the flexibility to deviate from those paths for safety purposes, and therefore there are no fines imposed on airlines for deviating from those flight procedures.
Mayor?
Please, go ahead.
So what is the standard or the list of what is considered for them to deviate for safety reasons? What is the, do they have a list of saying, "Okay, this one can deviate due to safety reasons," or?
I'm not aware of a specific list that they use to allow for those deviations. The FAA and the Air Traffic Control Office under the FAA is responsible for this operation of airspace and ensuring that safety. And so I can't answer your question, Councilwoman Pastor.
I mean, there are elements of the air traffic control system where, let's say, aircraft are required to maintain a certain separation from other aircraft. And if the air traffic controller deems that there's going to be an anticipated loss of separation, let's say the aircraft trailing another aircraft is going faster, and he anticipates that there's going to be an issue, that would be an example of an area where they would deviate on the flight path and turn the, one of the aircraft out of the way. There's other situations that the air traffic controllers deal with, but it's predominantly to maintain the separation between aircraft.
So is there documentation on the floor that you just mentioned stating why they had to deviate?
There is no documentation. That is a, the responsibility of the air traffic controllers who are managing the airspace and the pilot of the aircraft.
So they don't, FAA doesn't document any of that?
For deviation, no. The only time that there would be, let's say, a documentation or some notation made is when there is an actual loss of separation.
You have just questions? We can come back to you too if you have additional ones. Vice Mayor, you have some questions, then any other council members?
One question was actually answered by the questions from Councilwoman Pastor's constituents. I appreciated that. I agree with Councilwoman Nowakowski. I think we're on a trip to nowhere here. I think it's going to wind up in the same place and will wind up in court. But I am curious, did we get treated the same here in Phoenix as other cities? I mean, exactly the same in the process that was used in other cities?
Mayor Stanton, Vice Mayor Waring, no, we did not. You will see in the legal brief that it has been very well documented that Phoenix was treated extraordinarily different than other cities. Other large metropolitan areas who Other large metropolitan areas who had flight path changes, such as Dallas, Los Angeles, Boston, had more significant changes implemented, or less, excuse me, less significant changes than what was implemented in Phoenix. In other words, they, the new procedures sat right on top of the old procedures. Those cities were, did an environmental assessment, which is part of the NEPA process. In Phoenix, the flight path changes were more significant, and they did a categorical exclusion with no public contact at all, no public outreach or notification.
Amy, just to clarify, the cities did not do an environmental assessment. The FAA did the environmental assessment in those cities.
Yes, that is correct. This is the FAA's responsibility to do the environmental review on these procedures before they're implemented. So I apologize for misspeaking there.
And I believe it was Mayor Stanton's point before. I mean, if they had done more public output, as apparently they did in every other city where they've done this, there would have been probably a lot of pushback, and they might not have gone down this path. It seemed like that would have saved them a lot of aggravation, certainly would have saved us a lot of aggravation, but most importantly, would have saved our constituents a quality of life change that has not been ideal. So what do they say when you ask, why did we get treated differently than other cities?
Mayor Stanton, Vice Mayor Waring, what they say is that they didn't expect any impact. And what you heard at our December 16th policy session is that they didn't expect there to be the impacts. They clearly understand now that that assumption was flawed, and there has been significant, tremendous impacts in our community. I'm not sure why they came to the conclusion that there would not be any impacts. They documented in their modeling in, in the one letter that we saw to the State Historic Preservation Office indicating that there would be no impact even on regular conversation. And clearly, there has been impact to conversation as well as the ability to concentrate and get a good night's sleep.
I mean, I guess, I just don't understand why they wouldn't be more willing to make changes, rather than, I mean, this just sounds like it's going to be an extremely lengthy process. And I just, there's just been no give, like, maybe we screwed up, or any acknowledgement of that, and maybe we should go back and try to change things quicker. I mean, it sounds like, it sounds like they recognize they're really messing with people's lives, whole neighborhoods, our constituents. So I guess I'm just, but, but be that as may, they're not, they're not willing to do anything? It doesn't surprise me, it's the FAA, but, but it is a little disappointing, to put it mildly.
Mayor Stanton, Vice Mayor Waring, the, the only acknowledgement of, of a flawed process would be the comments of FAA Regional Administrator Glenn Martin in this policy session. They have agreed to form this technical working group to look at changes that can be made, and so that, that's the only indication of their willingness to go back and look at making changes and try to implement something to relieve the, the effects on the community in the quickest way possible. That was one of the things that the FAA administrator indicated, that even to go back to the old flight path would take quite a long time, and, and the benefits of the overall improvements would be lost. And so it would be faster for us to just look at making changes to the flight path that were having the most impact on the community.
And, and, I'm not speaking to you when I say this, so that all sounds absurd, just given that they were running these same routes every single day for years until September, whatever it was. So I know that's your characterization of what they're saying, so it's not directed at you, but, but that just sounds silly to anybody who, we can't go back to something we were doing every single day a couple months ago, because the whole world would collapse. This sounds preposterous. And so I guess that's why I've drawn the conclusion, and I don't want to speak for them, but I think Councilman Noakowski did, that this isn't going to go all that well, and that eventually we'll wind up having to take more serious action. I mean, there's nothing that I hear in any of this that sounds promising at all from our perspective. It sounds like they treat us differently than everywhere else, had big impacts on our communities, but it doesn't really sound like they care that much. They're certainly not willing to go back and revisit this, and if they are, we're going to, they're just going to do sort of, since he just passed away, Dean Smith is a basketball coach, he used a stall technique, the four-corner offense. I mean, that's what it sounds like they're doing. So, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sir, please fill out a card, and you'll have the opportunity to make a, a comment. Councilwoman Gago?
Thank you. Just, I wanted to reiterate what Councilman Noakowski said about how much this is really impacting people's daily lives. We're hearing people who have totally changed their patterns, who are thinking of leaving the community if they have the ability, and then many people, especially those in, in our public housing, who have no other choice, and who are, in many cases, have significant mobility challenges, so that it is painful for them to leave, and, and we really need to find a solution for these folks. I did share that information with the technical working group, and it, they seem to be responding. I don't know if it's false hope, but they did seem to agree that they really would like to avoid doing this impacts to, to our people in our community, and so I'm hopeful they will take that to heart and really realize how much this impacts people's daily lives. You mentioned that we did two hours of noise monitoring at some of these sites. We have a lot of variation throughout the day, different patterns related to cargo. We have some of our largest planes might have taken off during a different time than that two hour. Could you explain why we decided that timeframe?
That, the timeframe is based on a typical approach to noise monitoring. There is, it's basically a gathering of sample data, and even sometimes when the flight traffic, when a noise monitor was in the West and the traffic was departing to the East, it gives us a good sense of the baseline noise levels, so that that all gets fed into a model, which has been built based on the profile and the operations of the Phoenix Airport, the flights that we have, the type of aircraft that our airlines are using. And then that creates the model of the noise impacts for an average annual basis. Is there anything you want to add to that? Okay.
But is it possible we could have had a more convincing model if we had those monitors there at the type of highest impact?
Because it is based on a model that develops a result for the average annual impact, having a monitor in place at a peak period would not necessarily change the average for the year. So this is a sample data that is put into a model that's based on the flight schedule and the type of aircraft that are being operated.
And the model is sophisticated enough that it accounts for variations in cargo, cargo traffic throughout the year and some of the other scheduling changes?
It is, the model is, is developed in accordance with federal regulations, and it is used for noise monitoring and producing noise exposure maps at airports throughout the United States.
Any good news from the results of those monitors?
I have not seen the results of those, the noise data yet, so I, I'm afraid I can't answer that question, Councilwoman Gago.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Mr. Russ Cousins, if you would like to testify on this item, please come forward. And then I know Diane Barker and Susan Edwards put in, filled out the white cards. If you did wish to provide testimony, now would be a good time to do it. Thank you, Mr. Cousins, for being here.
My name is Russ Cousins, and I live at basically 16th Avenue in Cano. And I want to talk about two things. One thing was these airplanes wandering. We get about 225 flights a day over my house. These planes are all over the sky. Those things go all the way from Encano Park, which is what, three miles from Grand Avenue at that point, to about a mile the other side of Grand Avenue. So there's no way that there's few flights a day. This is at least 25 or 30% of these airplanes wandering in the sky. It's not three or four flights now and then, it's every day. And these flights, whenever they're flying west, they go anyplace they want to go. It's not like anybody's controlling anything, and there's a straight line here, they're going up Grand Avenue, they're all over the sky. The other thing is the monitoring. The FAA does, does day and night monitoring. They don't do one specific incident monitoring. This monitoring is a complete waste of time, complete waste of money. Nobody's going to pay any attention to that information. So whatever you spent was a waste of time and money, because they don't do incidences. They do it day and night. When we're not flying, that's figured into the amount, and it, it's not going to do any good. We'll never meet their guideline of 65 dB, ever. So those are my two comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cousins, for taking the time to come down here. Susan Edwards or Diane Barker, did either of you wish to provide testimony? Ms. Edwards, thank you for being here.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I just want you to know that the heat is on on Nextdoor.com. And I was ready, I'm glad the city is ready to sue, because I was ready to contribute $500 to the lawsuit that is being proposed on Nextdoor. One of the people in the neighborhoods has talked to Osborne Mallon, somebody's talked to somebody else. But just so you know, neighbors are ready to do that. And I swear there are more helicopters. But it's constant, it's just constant. I sit in the sunroom doing a lot of late-night work in the last two weeks, and it shakes my sunroom, the helicopters back and forth in the middle of the night, 2:30 in the morning, the plane's going over. It's just 24/7. But I wanted you to know about the lawsuit.
Thank you very much, Ms. Edwards. Ms. Barker, did you wish to provide testimony on this item?
In support of all citizens' comments.
Thank you very much. I'll now turn to other members of the council as well. Councilwoman Lucicio, please.
Thank you, Mayor. It is very painful to listen to all of this, all these machinations, because quite frankly, it is literally nothing but a delay tactic. All this stuff, I think that one gentleman said it right. It is nothing but a delay tactic on these poor individuals, these individuals that were impacted. Let me make this very clear. The FAA said it made a mistake. And until this city comes up with a strong statement, not, we may look at legal action, until it says, if you want to enter into negotiations, you have to come from a position of authority and from a position of power. This, these machinations are going to do nothing but make it worse for the public, make it worse for their lives, and it's going to create nothing. At the end of the day, you're going to get a disgruntled public if they don't see action from the city. What I am going to do is propose, and I know we can't do it today, because for some reason this was set up as a no-action item, it should have been set up for action, but I follow Councilman Noakowski's lead on this. The City of Phoenix needs to come up with a clear vote, a clear direction that says that if the FAA does not accomplish X, Y, and Z within this timeframe, we will file a lawsuit on this date. That is what needs to happen in the City of Phoenix. No more of this dancing around stuff. And so this council needs to take a vote on that, and then we need to follow through on that. That is the only thing the FAA will understand. The, let me get one more point. Yeah, even the language that the city uses, "flight path issues," why not call it what it is? It is a disruption of people's lives. We want, if this lawsuit goes forward, if, because I don't know what's happening right now, we should be a lot more clear. If this decision to go with, forward with a lawsuit, it will be to ensure that the FAA follows its own guidelines it's set in place, and that it creates the same level playing field as it does in other communities. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Are there additional comments? Councilwoman Williams, please.
Thank you. I certainly agree. I think it's time that the city took formal action. But I also have a question for legal, probably. Can the individuals sue the FAA for the disruption in their life, the pain and suffering they're going through?
Mayor, Councilwoman Williams, as I'm thinking through this, so generally, the FAA has broad general discretion in routes and enforcing safety and airline safety. Generally, their jurisdiction rises above at least a certain level. I don't know exactly, but I believe it's like 1,000 feet and above. And so generally, it's really difficult for an individual to sue the FAA with regard to specific FAA actions. It's possible, but I believe it's very difficult.
Okay. I was, I was just curious. And then while we're sitting here, I received a, a text message from a resident very near to Deer Valley Airport, because remember you said that, you told me that they were, FAA was changing the flight patterns for the Super Bowl? And she says, nothing's been changed. It is still very noisy and going over that house. So if you could look into that, because you may be able to tack it on to this one.
Mayor Stanton, Councilwoman Williams, the flight path changes that were to accommodate the Super Bowl traffic were just for a few days during the heavy traffic over the Super Bowl weekend. And what they did is they, the flight paths didn't move, but traffic was reassigned to different corridors in order to accommodate the heavy volume of traffic that was departing from Deer Valley and Scottsdale. So they basically, I, I sort of liken it to an event management plan, when we have a large baseball game letting out in the downtown area, we assign traffic to move on certain streets to accommodate that extra heavy flow of traffic. So that happened over that weekend, and that is no longer in place.
But I think it is.
That's what she's saying.
That's what I'm saying, is somebody forgot to tell them to take it back to normal, that they don't need to, to make those extra routes to avoid the heavy flights, because there are people around the airport are complaining they're still taking the Super Bowl routes over their house. Or they didn't have it previously.
Okay.
Are any other comments or questions by this, by this council for this FAA update? Please, Councilwoman?
I have, I have a question. It says, does the city manager have a plan for assessing and addressing the environmental, physical, and mental health burdens that have been borne by residents since September 18, 2014 flight path change?
I'm a city manager.
That's a pretty big task. What we are doing is we are working with the plans been laid out by Ms. Fisher and the airport staff to work with a working group. We filed a legal protest, and we're having community meetings. You know, so we're going to continue to follow along that path as best we can. It is, it is creating a significant disruption in the central city neighborhoods and in Levine, and we've communicated that clearly to FAA. We'll continue to clear, communicate that clearly to FAA and move forward on it.
Okay. My, I know we're not making action right now, but here's my two cents and recommendation, is that after March 9th, when the work group gets together, that Chad and former Congressman Ed Pastore come and report, and then at that moment have, determine, have it as action and determine how we want to move forward. And I think that's probably the best way of doing it, because the working group meets March 9th, and from there, I think we meet March 18th. I don't know if we do it in policy or in form also. That's, that's a question for Dan.
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastore, I believe that March 18th is a formal.
Okay. Oh. Do we, however the process goes, procedural wise.
All right, excellent. Any other comments by members of this council? I'll hand over to Councilwoman Gago in, in, in just a moment. I do want to address the issue that I think that Councilwoman Williams brought up, and I'm not sure this is the exact question, not necessarily whether an individual person could have a separate action from the city as a whole, but probably more appropriately, as was discussed by Ms. Edwards, is whether the historic neighborhoods as a separate organization could have a claim against the FAA, separate and apart from the City of Phoenix. My belief is that they probably could, that the, that the historic neighborhoods in our city who have been disproportionately impacted by this, you know, just very, very difficult situation, because of the inappropriate and probably inaccurate information provided to the State Historic Preservation Officer, which is one of the legal requirements before they move forward with something like this that has such a great impact on the historic neighborhoods, is uniquely positioned to potentially have a separate claim. And I know there's a lot of discussion going on in the neighborhoods, as there should be, about whether or not the historic neighborhoods would want to do something separate and apart from the, the City of Phoenix. What I have heard loud and clear, I think unanimously from this council, is that we're passionate about this issue. We want to be as strong as we can, but we don't want to solve one neighborhood's issue and have an impact on other neighborhoods, particularly neighborhoods that are either largely African-American or Latino, or it presents a unique environmental justice issue. Nobody wants that to occur. This would make this an incredibly challenging This makes us an incredibly challenging issue. Anyone that paints us with a broad brush that makes us seem like a simple issue, I think is doing a disservice to this community or to any neighborhoods. Our job is to represent all of the community. So, we, we're trying to thread a needle here and get us right, where we resolve the immediate issue, which is a very, very unfortunate issue that should have never happened, and do it in a way that doesn't have a disproportionate impact on other neighborhoods. And so, that's our challenge as leaders of this, of this city. And so, there may be separate litigation from the historic neighborhoods. I don't think anyone up here would dissuade the historic neighborhoods from doing that. Our challenge, though, is to come up with a solution that doesn't solve that issue in a way that then results in a whole series of other issues. In my opinion, that's what leadership entails, and that's what we up here on this dais have to do, and that's why we've adopted this strategy. I think we're going to know in fairly short order whether or not this is heading in the right direction, and if we want to short-circuit that and file litigation, that's great. We just need to be clear about what our goal in that litigation is, so the entire city is aware of what we're trying to accomplish. Right now, it's the stated position, unanimous position of this council, that we would want to get back to the old, the old, the previous departure procedure outs from Sky Harbor. And so, if we move forward with any litigation, we just have to be absolutely clear what we're trying to accomplish, so that way the full community is aware of the goals of this council. And so, it's a very, very difficult, complex issue, and we've got to get this one right to do right by the citizens of our city. Councilwoman.
I think that's a very good point and well-made. And we've heard definite testimony that it's not just two departure paths, and that people are impacted throughout our city. So, I think it's our job as a city to make sure the FAA is well-aware of where everyone lives in the city, all of the residential areas. Certainly, they appear to have thought Grand Avenue was an industrial area, so maybe they need our help finding where people live, because it's, there are so many people living in the areas. But, when we talk about the Levine departure and the Grand Avenue departure, I think we need to make sure that we are also talking about everyone who lives everywhere. There are people who live much closer to the airport. Councilman Noakowski spoke about people in the downtown area and central city, and so I just want to say that it's certainly my commitment to look out for the people living throughout the City of Phoenix and not just look.
I think, and I think it's a good point, I think it's, in my opinion, that's unanimous position of this council, is that we're not, we're going to solve this issue, but we're not going to solve it by moving the current problem, which is tragic, to another neighborhood. We're going to get this right. And that's why the working group and having the leadership of Congressman Pastor is such an important part of it, because he's such a trusted figure. That's why Councilman Noakowski suggested Congressman Pastor to be the face of this community and the voice of this community in that, in that working group. Any additional comments by members of the council? Councilman Noakowski, please.
Mayor, I just really want to thank our airport staff. They've been reaching out to the community. A lot of people are confused about the community meetings. It's not the FAA organizing these community outreach meetings, it's really our airport staff, and they're gathering information. Some individuals were kind of upset about the process, but the process was set up so that we can gather data. So, in case there is a lawsuit, we have all that data, all that information, so that we can use. The other thing is exactly what the mayor was talking about, we wanted to make sure we extended the invitation out to different communities. We had meetings out in the Levine area, and the agricultural area, in downtown Phoenix, in the historic neighborhoods. So, our staff is really doing a hard job in reaching out and doing that Team Phoenix approach. I really want to thank you all for your hard work.
Any additional comments? And I think that Councilwoman Pastor's suggestion is a good one, that we schedule something for a more formal basis. We're going to give, change our policy, which is to go back to the original, direct our staff to do everything it takes, get back to the original flight path. We're going to go in a different direction shortly after that. Next working group would be the right time to do so. Any other comments or questions? Thank you very much for that very thorough presentation. Thank you, members of the community, for being here relatively short notice. Next item on our agenda for the policy session of the City Council is item number three, which is 2015-16 general fund status update and five-year forecast. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. I'm pleased to share good news that the 2015-16 general fund budget status shows a balance between resources and expenditures for 2015-16, excluding any state budget charges or revenue cuts to the city. The City Council has exhibited strong leadership over the last year to get us to this good news. City employees have worked hard to save money and have also sacrificed pay and benefits. Our residents have also stepped up and been part of the solution. Last January, our five-year forecast projected a potential deficit for 2015-16 of up to $54 million, and that forecast a year ago focused our work during the summer and the fall. We tightened our revenue estimates in September. City employees worked smarter to hold down spending wherever possible. Mayor and council led with difficult decisions. Employee concessions negotiated for the second year of labor contracts built in savings for 2015-16. Residents told us they were willing to pay a little more, about 1% in fees and charges to save city services. And in December, the mayor and city council approved eliminating 162 general fund positions early, saving $20 million over two years. Those significant efforts that you led have now paid off in balanced revenues and expenses in the 2015-16 budget. This means we will not have to propose cuts for 2015-16, assuming no state cuts or additional charges to the city. And here, I would just say, one significant threat at the legislature has been the effort to repeal the apartment rental tax, which could affect our general fund by at least 12, I'm sorry, by at least $18 million per year. That would be a significant issue, and so that's one we have to watch. But, assuming that those things don't happen, we are in a balanced situation. And so, Budget and Research Director Mario Panayagua will now walk us quickly through the status.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the City Council. We are able to bring forward a balanced budget for 2015-16, which means the revenues match the expenses that are needed to continue the current services to the public. That balanced budget does not require any proposals to cut any services. So, it is good news, as the City Manager mentioned, that does not include any action potential by the state in adopting their budget. The governor's budget that had been proposed to balance the state budget for 2015-16 would impact the City of Phoenix by a net of about $4 million. There's also the potential that he talked about on the legislation for the rental tax. As the mayor and council have affirmed time and again, the priority of the city budget is in the area of public safety. This charge, this chart shows you what every general fund department looks like in terms of the amount of dollars. If every department looked like a bar on a chart, and the size of that bar was determined by how much general fund money they received, this is what you would see with the police and fire departments on the left. This chart's helpful just to know how much money is allocated and where it goes. If we zoom in a little bit, we can see that 95% of the general fund is taken up in 13 service areas of the city. So, police, fire, parks, and library being the largest, but you also see in there other service areas like neighborhood services, street maintenance, transit, the court system. If we zoom in just on the four that provide general fund, or the general fund departments that provide public safety and criminal justice services, we see that that's over 70% of the general fund. About 15 years ago, it was 58%. So, we've seen a lot of change in terms of the mayor and council's focus on the priority, which, on the community's priorities, which is to protect the public, keep them safe, and go after crime. On March 24th, staff will bring forward a balanced city manager's trial budget. Again, that balance, that budget is expected to be balanced barring any action by the state that reduces city revenue or increases costs. We'll also present additional information in that trial budget about services and changes from this year to next. That budget will be taken out to the community at budget hearings throughout the city during the month of April. And now, as we examine a longer-term view of the city's fiscal picture, I'll turn it quickly back over to Ed Zirker.
Thanks, Mario. Mayor, so we'll transition to talk a little bit about this five-year general fund forecast, which, as I discussed earlier, is a really useful strategic tool that we use. We used it last year, and we'll continue to use it. And so, the reason we're able to bring forward a balanced budget for 2015-16 is really because of the early actions that we took, that the mayor and the council took, based on the information we had in a five-year forecast. The, that advanced knowledge gives us the information we need to make it work. As we look at the updates of the five-year forecasts, we have good news for 2015-16. We do see some challenges ahead for 2016-17, and so we want to turn our attention now to talking about that and look at that five-year forecast in a little more detail. Mario?
Thank you, Ed. Again, these are long-term projections. These numbers on here are not an official budget for the entire forecast. The council doesn't take an action on the forecast, but the forecast is a tool that helps the city to plan and make decisions that advance the City of Phoenix forward and protect city services. That first column on the left shows you the resources and expenditures for 2015-16. They match, so we're balanced. As we move forward, you see ranges for the resources and the expenses, and also for the bottom line. And what those ranges represent are scenarios. So, in the most optimistic scenario, we see the highest revenue, the top of the revenue range, and in the most pessimistic scenario, we see the bottom. And the same is true with the expenses, with the range of costs, and then ultimately, the ending balance. And as we look at 2016-17, it's clear that we do face a potential deficit of between $31 and $58 million. But, as we talked about, advance notice enables advanced action, and as we prepared for 2015-16, that mayor and council took that advanced action to help get us to where we are, which is a balanced budget. We know what is ahead, and the city has shown continued resolve in facing these challenges head-on. In the years that follow 2016-17, the pessimistic scenarios could mean further deficits, while the optimistic scenarios show potentially substantial surpluses in those years. The most likely scenarios have the city coming close to breaking even in those later forecast years. So, a question that most people naturally have is, why is the city facing a deficit in 2016-17? The city has been very aggressive in reducing costs over the last several years, so what is going on to cause this situation? And mainly, the answer has to do with our pension costs, particularly public safety pension. Those costs in the public safety pension system have risen very rapidly. They're still rising and are expected to continue rising substantially for several more years. It's important to point out that the pension for police and fire is under the state's Public Safety Personnel Retirement System, or PSPRS. The city does not manage or control this pension system. Any potential reform of PSPRS has to come at the state level. What we see is that in 2016-17, public safety pension costs will increase by about $25 million. This is the largest reason that the city faces a significant deficit in 2016-17. In 2017-18, that number jumps again by about $20 million and continually, continues to rise throughout the forecast period. We, as we look at the civilian pension system, it's a different trend. Unlike that, the public safety system, we see that the civilian pension system is managed by the city. And the mayor and council and city voters have taken actions to bring reform to the civilian city pension system, which is now beginning to pay off. This slide shows the difference between the two systems, and the bars on the bottom represent the civilian system, which shows more normal increases through 2017-18, and then actually begins to start decreasing. The actions taken to reform the system are making a big difference in helping the budget picture now, as well as in the future. This trend's also demonstrated on this next slide, where we see the civilian pension system, really as a percentage of the general fund operating costs, is a flat line and actually begins to decrease in the coming years. For public safety, we will continue to see that percentage rise each year. Costs are...
Can I ask a question?
Of course, Councilwoman.
Ed, we know that the public safety pension is the problem. Are we working with the legislature and the police and fire to find ways to amend the process and the plan now? At least, I know we can't touch current employees, but we've done that for coworkers. Why aren't we working to do this for that fund?
Mayor, Councilwoman Williams, thank you for that question. So, the public safety pension is a big obligation of the city, and it's one that, you know, we are committed to for our public safety officers. We want to make sure that it's sound. We're at very early stages on this, so the, there have been proposals, as recently as Saturday, there was one mentioned in the newspaper by the firefighters to reform the system to bring costs under control. The city has been working as part of the League of Cities and Towns on a working group for that. So, I'd say we are at the very front end of beginning those discussions at the state level, but it's the kind of discussion that all cities and counties in the state are going to want to engage in, because this is not unique to Phoenix. The purple bar is actually more dramatic in some cities than it is here. And so, I think all cities and counties in the state, and even the state itself, have an interest in taking some action with the public safety personnel retirement system.
All right, good. And then, I know, I don't see him out there now, but President Joe Clure of the Phoenix Law and Enforcement Association was here. When he comes back, he might want to comment on, because I know he's involved in those discussions as well. Vice Mayor, do you have a comment on that or a question?
Councilwoman Williams asked an excellent question, but I haven't heard in the paper that our sister cities or the county are running big deficits like we're talking about going forward. I mean, there's just a lot of red on this page, so why is that?
Why is, why is...
Well, why, the other cities, why aren't they having budget presentations like this? To my knowledge, they are not.
I can't speak to the specifics of the other cities and where they are in their budget development process, so it may be that it's early for many cities to be giving that, or whether they're doing a five-year forecast, I don't know. Our situation is really based on what we know about Phoenix with our revenue. And in just a second, Mario's going to talk to you a little bit about our revenue side as well, where we have a challenge. But, I don't know specifically what's happening in each of the other cities.
I'd like to, I've been making a request, I'd like us to reach out to other cities and see where they're at, because as I'm looking at the math here, so our pension costs between 2015-16 and 2016-17 go up $28 million, based on the chart on page, I guess it doesn't have a page, but this chart. So, I'm adding the increase in the two purples and the increase in the two greens, and I'm getting 28. And we're expecting on the low end, our expenses to go, or I guess, I guess the high end, expenses to go up about $30 million, you know, $29 to $33 million, in addition to the increases in the pension costs. So, the pension cost explains half of our problem. How did they arrive at the expense number for the other half, the economist you used?
Mario?
I mean, what accounts for that?
Excuse me?
What accounts for that?
On the...
On other increases apart from the pension costs, because that's only half the increase, roughly.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, when we look at a forecast, we generally do include an assumption about overall increases to cost. Pension is part of that, but also, just to ensure that we're providing a reasonable estimate, we look at historic growth rates, we look at generally inflation rates, and that's how, that's what's tie, that's what's really pushing the increases, just normal inflationary growth rates in those other areas.
All right. I mean, we'll have labor contracts, so next year, before fiscal year 2016-17, we'll have new labor contracts. I mean, I can't believe the unions are going to be happy if cuts are proposed in any way, shape, or form, even though they're beneficiaries of the pension system. You know, I guess words were used, very optimistic words at the start of this. I just don't know how anybody could be optimistic, looking at this sheet. I mean, yes, if things progress in a great fashion, over time, perhaps we're back in the black in 2018 or 2019, but easily, that could also not be the case. I mean, things could get worse. What do we do for another recession? You know, people wouldn't want to hear it, it's not what we're all hoping for, but that could easily happen as well. It's been several years since the end of the last one, even though things aren't great now, that doesn't mean we're going to just get rid of the old economic cycle and we're not going to be due. I mean, this red ink could actually grow pretty dramatically, state takes a few more actions. How much is the apartment bill that they're talking about? What would that cost us in this fiscal year?
Mayor, Vice Mayor...
Or this coming fiscal year, I guess I'd say.
The city currently gets about $18 million of general funds annually from the apartment rental tax. So, depending on when it's enacted and all that, but an annual basis is about $18 million to the general fund.
So, let's say it was enacted, you know, in time for it to kick in July 1st. That may be optimistic, but they could put an emergency clause, anything could happen. Does that mean suddenly our projected deficit surplus goes from a dash on the, on this one, to minus 18, and then you just add an $18 million cost across the board on all of these? I mean, that's a pretty steep...
Mayor, Vice Mayor, that's correct. Mayor, Vice Mayor, that's correct.
I'm not saying I'm against the bill. I'm just saying, in general, that's a lot of money. And I have not heard, in several discussions with you and then with Mario as well, that there's any plan to address the red I see on this page. I mean, I know it's preliminary. I know that's a year from now, but that should cut... So instead of optimism, you know, a cautious look at the future might be more in order when we're telling citizens, you know, what's going on. They may not come to budget hearings this year to talk about this budget, but they may want to come, and frankly, union members are listening and so forth, may want to start having discussions about where we're going to be a year from now, because this is not a pretty picture. I mean, it looks like, in our optimistic verbiage, we're still seeing no way we're going to have a balanced budget next year.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, I don't know that I would describe myself as a complete optimist. I'm more of a realist, I think. And that's why I started by talking about the fact that a year ago, we had a five-year forecast that said, where we sit today, we could potentially face a $35 million deficit. And we got to work, and we got after it. And now, assuming that the state doesn't get into our revenues or expenses, we're balanced. The same work lies ahead of us for the next 15 months. You're absolutely right. It's not a time to rest. It's a time to focus our energy and attention. Just like we did last year when we said it could be $35 or $54 million, we're looking ahead at 1617 in the same way, and we've got to start working. In just a second, we'll talk about some strategies that I'm already starting to implement with Mario and the department heads to look at the cost side of the equation, because we have to start now. That's the point of the five-year forecast, is exactly what you're saying, is we start now, we look down the road, we take a clear-eyed view, and we make hard decisions.
I appreciate, and I appreciate your talking like that, because I think that's important. We don't always do that here. I mean, in a year where we don't have labor contracts, you're projecting, state action notwithstanding, a balanced budget. I mean, now would be the ideal time, to rather than just pass a budget and be happy about it, because it's balanced for this year, to really look at some of our functions and perhaps remove some of them, scale some of them back, because it has a ripple effect through the rest of these years that I'm looking at on this page. And I just fear that that may, you know, we might take the easy way out and just look at it like, this year's balanced, so we're good, and we'll worry about next year, next year. So I would certainly, my personal request would be, and I don't think you guys would do this, and just rest on your laurels for a few months, you know, start looking now. So I'm heartened to hear that it sounds like you're doing that. So, and if we could have periodic discussions about how that's going and where we stand in relation to this $58 or $31 million deficit throughout the course of the year, that would be great. Thank you.
And now, we can go forward and really address the other side of the issue.
Yeah, real quick, I want to make sure it's clear. We did adjust our policy so that this council did get more regular budget updates. I think it was a request of probably all of this, all of this council, because the Vice Mayor did bring it up. What format will the regular updates to this council be? Is it monthly now? I believe it was monthly after the overly optimistic revenue estimates from a year and a half ago.
Mayor, that's correct. If you recall, we started already last September, immediately upon returning from the summer break. We started in September with every month having updates and actions taken on the budget all the way through December, and now we're in the new year. So that's correct.
All right. The Councilman DeCecio had a couple of questions or comments, and then we'll continue with the presentation.
Yeah, just a couple of things, Mayor. One, you know, the police and the public, because it's not just about police, have unfairly, have taken the brunt of these budgets and the lack of strategic planning here at the City of Phoenix. We're down over 550 police officers. If you think about it, a focused city focuses on those strategic functions. You don't allow it to get to a crisis level on the streets. If you look at what's been occurring here at the City of Phoenix, we've been able to fund everything else out there but those main, that main strategic function, and keep it to the level that protects the public. You know, you've heard me say this a thousand times. I get it when it comes to the cost. But if you look at it, that was the one area that this city literally allowed to continue to decline. We'll talk about it in the next one either. The second one is, I would like to get, and I want to make sure we're following through on Councilman Waring's request, to find out what the other cities are doing and their projections. I think you're going to find Glendale to be a little bit more problematic. They may be fine this year, but moving forward, when Countback Ranch comes completely online for them, I think that's going to be a problem. And I know they restructured their debt. That may be the only other city in the valley. But if you look at it, this City of Phoenix has a structural deficit. We went through 2011, through two years around 2010, 2011, 2012, where we made, started to make things work. And then for what, how many years in a row now? Since 2012, 13, 14, this city has been facing a financial catastrophe. When you look at these, these areas that are in the red. I want to thank staff for doing all that you can, but until we start looking at the structural issues here at the City of Phoenix, like true structural issues, as Councilman Waring was starting to allude to, find out what those functions are that are strategic. Those are the functions that we make sure we take care of. You can always look at these charts and say, well, we're already funding public safety. Well, we're not funding it enough, quite frankly, because at the end of the day, there are not enough police officers on the street. So you've got to look at other areas. And then you have to make a determination. Once you see if it's strategic, and the answer is yes, then you have to make a determination of whether or not we should be doing that function. And you've heard me say this so many times, Ed, in my office, but I'm going to keep drilling this home, is that every time the City of Phoenix hires somebody, a new employee, that could, the City of Phoenix has now incurred a long-term obligation to take care and commitment for over 50 years for that employee. Once they reach the five-year vesting period, we've made a commitment for life, basically, to take care of that individual. Those non-strategic functions need, and through an attrition policy, I want to make sure so the unions don't start yelling at me again, but even through an attrition policy, any single position that is open needs to be the determination of whether or not that should be done internally or externally, from automobile repair to you name it. We've got over 200, I believe, individuals in just repairing automobiles, changing oil, changing tires, those types of things that can be easily looked at in the private sector. The other, when it comes to this apartment bill that's out there, you're going to run in, this city, for some reason, has a habit of looking at regressive taxes. People that live, that rent, are generally not as wealthy as others. So the tax, the food tax was on the poor, this rental tax is on the poor. It's on people who cannot afford, that is a total pass-through. If you think businesses are going to be paying this, you're wrong. They're not the ones that are paying it. It's the people that can barely make it day-to-day that are paying this tax. And I find it interesting that this year, which is an election year, all of a sudden, everything's okay, after we've been looking at the doom and gloom. So, and that next year, all, you know, you know what's going to hit the wall between $58 and $31 million. The best projection is a negative $31 million. So until we start doing what needs to be done to make that determination, the city will continually look at the structural problems. And I want to know where we're at with the other cities across the board as well. But I also want to know what our total retirement costs are. What ends up happening in these presentations, we always get reports that look like this, and they only cover one or two items. I want the public to see the entire picture for the last 10 years, where our total retirement costs are, everything, all-inclusive, and then project out for the next five years. When they see that, they will see total retirement costs to be in excess, from at least my own studies or my own looking into, it's going to be over $300 million this year, is what I project to be our total retirement cost, in excess of that. I would like staff to prepare some sort of report on that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. I, every month, you send a report by category. It's construction, it's retail, it's food sales.
Revenue, yes, ma'am.
When you do the analysis that the Vice Mayor has requested, I think that was on the expenditure side, I would like a comparison on, to the other cities, where they follow those categories. Because if they are doing more construction, then I think that's an area we need to look at. It's a way we can beef it up. I don't know. But there's several categories within, and I would really be interested how we compare on that basis, and if we all have the same revenue sources.
Mayor, may I add one more thing, too? Just one last.
Of course.
Okay, thank you. I had this conversation with Craig Barrett, who used to be the head of Intel, and we literally got into this discussion. If you are an input-based entity, you will fail. If you're looking only at what's coming in and not what your output expectations are, you will fail as an organization. It's kind of what I've been talking about here for a while. So we need to get away from looking at what new revenues, but how do we restructure internally? We need to get away from putting the additional burden on the backs of the taxpayer. They've had enough. It's our job to fix it internally without going more and putting more on these hard-working taxpayers. It's not fair.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilwoman?
Councilman DeCecio spoke that this budget had really been on the backs of police, but we've made cuts throughout the city. I mean, we really have to have a serious conversation about funding of infrastructure. We get regular complaints about that, from flood to transit. We've lost economic development opportunities because we didn't have the right infrastructure investments. And so we're doing something today to move forward on public safety, but that, that is not the extent of the hard conversations that we need to have. We've cut fairly deeply throughout the city, and we ought to recognize that and then continue to have conversations about what that means for our city. And if we're making the appropriate trade-offs, and understand, Councilman DeCecio would like to see some progressive tax options. So I'll be interested in seeing what you come up with. Well, I figured when you said we always look at regressive tax options, that...
Well, no, I said no more, you should not burden the taxpayer anymore. I mean, if you want to think that way, you can. I don't. My brain thinks more of output and like, how we can restructure internally, rather than looking at putting more of a burden on taxpayers. Excellent.
I want to make sure if he's paying attention.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other comments by members of this council before we continue with the presentation? Mr. City Manager, please?
Thank you, Mayor. That will segue us to talk about revenues, which is the other half of the equation. As you know, the emergency sales tax on food sunsets in about a month and a half from now. That is good news for taxpayers, but it also decreases our revenue a bit. And there's some other things that Mario will talk about that go into our general fund revenue forecasting.
So in 1516, one thing to point out is that when we compare this to our peak revenue of the past, 2007, 2008, we're about 2.9% higher than that former peak eight years ago. So the, it's clear that the increased costs that we're talking about, pension mainly, has outpaced that, that growth on the revenue side. The other thing to mention is that, as reported to the council last October, the city received news from the state regarding projections for state shared income tax due to the impact of previously enacted legislative cuts to corporate and income tax, or individual income tax. The state's revised projections decreased Phoenix's revenue estimate for 1617 by $12 million. So this is also a large component to the city's deficit projection for 1617. And so the other, the other quick point on the rental tax that we were talking about, the city manager mentioned that it was an $18 million effect on the general fund. A portion of that tax also goes directly to the public safety funds for police and fire. And so that, we're going to be talking about those funds in just a minute, but those would also be impacted. And some of the things that we're talking about today would, would be way more challenging and more difficult. So also on the revenue, it's clear that accurate projections are very important to the city's budgeting, to our residents, to the council. Staff has worked very hard to improve revenue forecasting over the last several months in particular. We've worked with the University of Arizona and renowned economists at the, at the university. We worked with Dr. Hammond, who is the Director of the Economic Business and Research Center, and Dr. Charney, who is a senior research economist, who worked directly with the Budget and Research Department to develop an improved econometric forecasting model to project each category of sales tax in Phoenix. The model accounts for Phoenix's diminishing region, portion of the regional sales tax base. Unfortunately, Phoenix's collections and sales tax, as a percentage of the regional collections, are diminishing. The sales tax projections that we've included in this forecast better account for that trend. Given the revenue challenges ahead, we've got to continue to make changes that minimize our costs, as we've talked about. And the city manager, Ed Zurker, is going to be talking about some initiatives that are already underway.
So to wrap up this, this portion, as we discussed, advance notice does allow us advanced action. And as we discussed for the 1516 budget, the deficit we projected a year ago has been taken care of because the city acted decisively. We know it can be done, although the challenge is in front of us, and we must continue to examine and discuss ways to achieve a balanced budget in 201617. So to that point, because the city charter does require a balanced budget, I, as I mentioned, we're already working on some, some early actions. I have a group of employee representatives who are working to look at our health insurance costs and our pharmaceutical costs that can bring us some savings if we work at that. I've also directed our human resources staff, but to that end, I've directed the human resources staff to work with our employee representatives on that. Later this year, we're going to have an electronic procurement system that will replace our paper-based system. We believe that that can bring us some more efficiencies as we consolidate our procurements, and those will fall to the bottom line here as well. And finally, Councilwoman Williams and Councilmember Valenzuela have chaired a pension reform for COPERS, further pension reform, which you will discuss next week on March the 4th. And that will also, in the long term, also bring us some relief as we move forward. And as we said, reform of the public safety pension system does require state action, and we are at the early stages of working that legislative agenda. So I want to thank you, the mayor and the council, and the city department heads who are here, the department staff throughout the city, the budget and research staff, who've all done great work to manage costs and achieve success for this year. We are almost at $100 million of accumulated efficiencies over the last five years. Staff are really, really working hard to find those efficiencies internally everywhere possible, and we will continue to do that, to bring the general fund in at balance, to minimize the impacts on the public. And so for 1516, we're pleased to say, with our caveat about the state, there will be no service cuts proposed in the manager's trial budget pending what the outcome from the state is. With that, we're happy to answer. Any further questions you might have?
Thank you. I did have a couple myself. So, you know, last year, can be self-congratulatory, I guess. I vote against the budget, and I also voted against the tactics that were necessary to make that budget balanced. I mean, the water bill has increased, the parking fees were increased and so forth. I guess that, that stuff can be revisited and done on a greater scale to cover some of these gaps. I hope that's not what's necessarily being implied. I think you're talking more about efficiencies and trying to bring out the washcloth, so to speak, and everything. To that end, so in the 2015, 2016 preliminary budget, how many employees are you accounting for? Like 14,500, something like that?
Vice Mayor Waring, approximately citywide for all funds, that would be about the right number.
Yeah. So, so in 2019, 2020, I mean, it's down about 3,000 employees from the peak. So in 2019, 2020, what are you expecting? Expecting the same number of employees? You're expecting increased efficiencies coupled with retirements and so forth? How many employees are you projecting there?
Vice Mayor Waring, this, the assumption would be that approximately the same number of employees.
I mean, because you've got, so you've got potentially a $224 million increase in revenue, or resources, I guess you'd call it. Again, this page is numbered, but this page here, I'll put it up on the screen. So what you're calling resources increasing about $224 million, which is, you know, quite a bit. I guess that's the most optimistic scenario, my experience. And given this year, we're going to spend whatever we take in plus some, or at least whatever we take in for sure. So you have $86 million in pension costs increasing over that same period of time, if you flip to one of the pension cost charts. So that leaves $138 million in increase that's not pension-related, based on this analysis, between 2015, 2016, and 2019, 2020. So four years. So that $138 million, based on what I asked before about just a year-to-year, is just general increases. That's not, that's not really salary increases, other than merit and longevity, which are automatic. You're, I assume, you're assuming that. You're assuming labor contract's not changing.
Yeah. If you, if you're looking at that, that's where you start getting to the potential surpluses in those out-years, right? So you, we know those pension costs, there, there's some inflation built in for other expenses. So, we know those pension costs, there's some inflation built in for other expenses, but if revenues perform optimistically, then the council would have a surplus to decide how to allocate.
And that money would be, well, we'd be spending $138 million more non, I guess my point wasn't even the deficit or increase, it was the $138 million more we're spending that we're not spending today that's not related to the pension. I mean, everybody knows the pension is driving $86 million of that increase. And just on a note on that, I assume the pension numbers, you're pretty sure, those should be pretty accurate, right? Is that a fair statement?
Vice Mayor, we're in...
More accurate than the revenue and expenditure projections, right?
We should actually give one other caveat. There is a risk that those pension numbers on the public safety side actually go higher because there is the impact of another lawsuit that has just been decided, but has not been, has not rippled through the PSPRS accounting yet, known as the Hall lawsuit. And so, we don't have any information on that, but it is a potential, depending on how that comes out.
How much could it cost us, or do you have any idea?
I don't think we know.
I mean, as soon as you know, obviously, let us know.
At this point, we don't know.
But you're saying, just in the general course of business, labor contract's the same, take out the pension part, we'd be expecting to have $138 million more to spend, and we probably would spend it, my guess, in the next four years from now? Is that a fair statement? Because it seems like that just shows that our budget is just kind of going up inexorably. We're not...
If you look at that $138 million, so part of that is shown as the $75 million surplus over expenditures, possibly.
Possible.
Right? So, a portion of that is just...
That's best-case scenario.
Part of that is just normal inflationary increases and everything other than pension. And assuming one scenario, you could have as much as a $75 million surplus that the council would be asked to decide how to allocate.
I'm sure we'll find a way to allocate, at least as a group. But, okay, thank you. It just seemed like a high number for relatively short period of time. Considering that we're not adding employees and considering that we're down 3,000 employees roughly from where we were a few years ago, it just seems like we should be in the black. As Councilman DeCecio likes to point out, we're taking in more revenue than we've ever taken in as a city. I think that's a true statement, correct? And we have fewer employees than we've had in quite some time.
I think the slide on the screen explains where the pressure is.
Yeah, but I mean, like, I was trying to illustrate here, it explains the pressure. We'd be in much better shape, but it doesn't explain all of it. I mean, we definitely have just rising costs, just generally, even with fewer employees. And even with more revenue, we're still not going to be getting to the black, and that's discouraging. Hence, my discussion of not being as optimistic as maybe others would be at the start. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Mayor Kozlowski, and then we'll allow the city manager to finish, so the budget director to finish the presentation.
Just some clarification on what the vice mayor was saying. So, he's saying that these five-year projections are based on the number of employees we have now. We're not looking at future growth of the city. We're looking at, we're not looking at retirement. We're not looking about replacing, we're just looking, keeping the same amount of employees within the next five years, and that's what these projections are off of, right?
Mayor, Councilman Kozlowski, correct. The assumption is that, generally speaking, the number of positions that are authorized in the budget would continue to be approximately the same number. Now, the expenditures assume a rate of growth, for the expenditures outside of the pension system, outside of things like merit and longevity for employee pay, are based on the historic rate of inflation that we've seen in this area of the country for several years. So, it's about 2.5% growth each year based on inflation. So, that was the assumption used for the forecasting of expenditures each year. So, obviously, that could change. It could be different, it could be higher, it could be lower, just based on what's going on. But that is the assumption that was used to project out those costs in each year.
And then, the other concern I have is that we're looking at the state having this new budget and adopting some new ordinances that basically cut about up to $48 million from the city of Phoenix, right? So, what are we actually doing to avoid that or to advocate these cuts? I mean, we talked about the apartments, we talked about the other taxes that are out there that might be cut from public safety, from our parks, transportation and all that. Are we advocating to not cut those? Are we working along with other cities to making sure that these cuts aren't happening? And if they do happen, do we have a Plan B to actually absorb that $48 million potential lost if this all happens, right?
Chief Manager, our legislative strategy.
Sure. Mayor, Councilman Kozlowski. So, we do have a legislative strategy about particularly the apartment rental, because that does fall into the categories that the council adopted as part of our legislative strategy, and our folks have been working on that. Were that to happen, we would have to come back to you very quickly, depending on when it would go into effect, to identify the kinds of reductions we would need to make to make up and keep a balanced budget with that much less revenue. We don't have a specific plan right now, but we would have to develop one very quickly if that were to pass.
And I hear the arguments on both sides about the apartment tax. Do we have any data or information about if it's added use of our city services of apartment owners or renters compared to regular residents? I know that there's higher density. I know that apartment complexes don't use our trash services, but they do use our water. Do we have any data saying that if you happen to live in an apartment complex with a higher density, that your usage of city services from parks, libraries, et cetera, are more of a burden on the city or not? The other thing is, and then what are the savings also? You know, I know that trash is independent from the city of Phoenix, so what are the savings also? So, if we can look at some of that data in the future to maybe understand the purpose of that general tax that we have on apartment complexes. Will.
All right. Other questions or comments by members of this council? Councilman Valenzuela, do you have something?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I'm also realist like our city manager, and I am an optimist, and, you know, it's important to recognize efficiencies and just collaborative effort, hard work, a team effort when it's, you know, when it's presented before us. One of the takeaways that I want people who are watching to understand is that, you know, according to what we are, what has been presented to us, initially, we thought we were going to face a deficit, well, we were facing a deficit that would be in the mid-30s, and this budget has been balanced. And it's not by accident, it's by working together. It's by making some really, really difficult decisions. And I could tell you, you know, it's not, it's not the easiest thing to sit here on the dais and ask nearly 14,000 employees to take a pay cut, for an example. Now, unexcusable, hopefully, we'll never have to do that again, but a lot of this was done on the backs of our employees. 1.6% concession in the first year, 0.9% in the next year. That's a big deal. Seniors are paying more at senior centers, another very tough vote. The parking meters downtown, another tough vote. We have voted to vacate, if you will, or to wipe clean 162 positions, employee positions from the general fund, 180 total. All of these incredibly tough votes and very tough decisions. The comprehensive organizational review evaluation, the core plan, was something that was presented, and Mr. DeHoney, I want to give you credit, our city manager, Mrs. Zirker, I want to give you credit for thinking outside the box, and I know this was all yours, Milton, but looking for these efficiencies, these things are not, they're not, you know, it's not by chance that we are balancing a budget, that we are forecasted to be in a deficit of about $34, $35 million. It's through hard work, it's through taking it one step at a time. Now, I do also realize, I also realize that we are facing a deficit in the next fiscal year, and we have to continue to look for these types of efficiencies. If you want to go, if you will, please go back to the slide that shows the pension. I want to just take a look at the public safety pension versus the civilian pension. This is the slide. I don't know if anyone can see that on television, but, you know, that, the green bar is there, that is the COPERS pension. You know, I mean, that's due to some very hard work on pension reform that has been passed. Pension reform in March of 2013 that the majority, high majority of the Phoenix voters in that election voted for. In addition to those changes, what we were able to do on this council, the majority anyway, on this council, to vote for other measures collectively, together, we all know the numbers by now, we're going to save about $800 million over the course of about two decades. We're able to realize some of that almost immediately. In the last fiscal year, the $38 million deficit that we faced would have been about $5 million deeper had we not made those changes, and that number's going to continue to grow. So, it's making those very tough decisions. Mrs. Zirker, you mentioned the ad hoc that was put together that we're going to hear about next week with more changes that I think will help keep our city in a place of solvency, but also in a place where we can also attract top talent to continue to serve in these positions across the board, which will bring even more savings. So, this is a lot of hard work to get us to this point, you know, that we, now, again, I don't want to, I don't want to paint a rosy, you know, outlook moving, you know, moving forward, other than to say that everyone here is working together, collaborative effort to get us to this point. The takeaway here is when we are facing a deficit, you know, when we are climbing ourselves out of a $38 million deficit, okay, and facing another deficit of about mid-30s, to get us to a point to balance the budget, you know, congratulations and thank you, first of all, to our city manager, Ed Zirker, and every city employee for helping to get us here, and to my colleagues on the council who helped get us here, especially those who helped by making those very tough decisions and those very tough, and casting those very tough votes to get us to this point. Had we not been able to do that, had the majority of the council not made any of these tough votes, well, then maybe we would be facing a deficit. But that's not the case today. Moving forward, I appreciate that we're looking at more. I appreciate that you're already thinking about, I'm talking to our city manager at this point, that our city manager is looking at, you know, pharmacy costs and health insurance and, you know, of course, next week's presentation on pension and whatever else we may be able to take a look at through the core plan and other ideas and efficiencies to get us to a point. You know, obviously, you know, it's going to, the challenge gets tougher and tougher. But, you know, we have to continue to work together and hopefully, we will have good news to share also for the next fiscal year. But for now, I want to say thank you, congratulations to all involved. I especially want to thank every city employee for stepping up in a very big way to help us, because not only did our city employees help us balance the budget when we were facing a $38 million deficit, but that 0.9% in the second year helps us get there this year as well.
Thank you very much, Councilman, for those great comments. Diane Barker did testify testimony on this item, and then followed by Richard Ray. I should have got to the cards earlier, I apologize.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, Diane Barker. I'm in District 7, and the seriousness of this budget and the five-year forecast is here now. I did have opportunity to read all of it, and I do hand it to Mario in doing a lot of work providing the information. We're not going to be having the food tax after April, for one thing. I understand with the multi-employer plan, and I know that our council here knows about that, certainly Councilwoman Gallegos asked about that, that is stepping up some standards on a 67 and 68 GASB, and the city, as a result, will be recording higher liabilities like in the billions. There, this new pension liability was talked about, a man who said that he was with the public, and this is off of the city's own information, I go to the audit committee, works for a publicly traded company, and he took a 33% hit in a financial statement. He says he would have some serious explaining to do, and he feels the city should be ready and prepared to let people know what they're about to read. All of you are oath-taking officers. Ed Zirker is 1993. He owes the public and the citizenry to tell the truth now about all of this. No rosiness, what really we're taking out of the budget tree, even with the light rail. It had an audit when Covasas was here, 2012. It's all bonded in 2015. You know, I look at Reimagine Phoenix. There are some good things that city is doing, trying to get new starts up. I was at that committee the other day for business and so forth. Says the city is creating a circular economy, and we want to take our refuge and turn it into resources. Great idea. The circular economy has been going between the city management and the council. You know, I've been like hearing other people talk about waste and abuse practices and policies that could better be changed, ways that you can go into the department and find from them key people that know about the waste. You say you have a line in the auditor's office that's supposed to be for integrity. No, the thing is, and it's for employees and citizens, been there. And Mr. Green said that he can handle violation on the ordinance, but not on any of the, he wouldn't handle the integrity. So, right here, I want to see the proof when our city manager says that there were 60, 70 complaints, and all of them were resolved with only 17? There was no number that was given on our complaints, and this are complaints on city practices and contractors. This has to stop. There's no citizen that I know that would bring a complaint to you into that integrity line unless they had a meritorious complaint. And I suggest that you put Mario on the audit committee with Mr. Zirker, Mr. Brown, and the third one, Mr. Green, so that he can have the information on the audits, which shows that the earnings were in one year, but they were reported the next. You need to look at the audits and marry it with this budget, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Mr. Ray is next. Thank you for coming down.
Richard Ray. Today, I've heard some really positive things said, not only from all of you, about what the city staff has done, but also the efforts that are being made. There are a whole raft of things that we can deal with. There are obviously big problems coming down the road. Phoenix is not alone. Phoenix is not just Arizona. It's every place, where cities have to deal with a whole raft of things that they didn't used to have to deal with. And we used to enjoy all kinds of growth potential, and right now, we still have the potential. The problem with potential is when you can actually affect the potential. One statement was made about if you don't watch the outflow, you will fail. Actually, when Intel chose to consider itself, it began worrying about its inflow, and that's why the plant is in Chandler. Had they not done that, they would have probably failed, but they did worry about the inflow. The city of Phoenix needs to worry about the infill as just as much as it needs to deal with the outflow. And I think, and I've watched from the inside a little bit, I've watched for four years, five years, I've watched amazing amounts of effort made and made by all kinds of people, certainly Mario and all of the group that supported him on this, getting this to the place it needs to be. The biggest concern that I have is that this, and it always sort of bothers me, is that we're all in this together, every single one of us. We pay the taxes, you pay the taxes. I want to feel like you guys and everybody are working as hard to help these people and not criticize... and not criticizing and finding things that aren't being done. There's a lot of things that can be accomplished, and I know we will. One last thing, and I don't want it to sound the wrong way, but I really would like to see in the process that we have, like we used to use in venture capital, use the highest and most likely, the one that could happen, and the one least likely, so that we have kind of a range. So people really, going forward, and our citizens, understand what the future might be, so they don't get wildly optimistic on one side or terribly pessimistic on another. But give them a range so that they can be aware that there could come a time when we will have to step forward and pay for those things we need, so.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ray, for being here today, and also for your service on innumerable city committees, mostly dealing with the budget, so we appreciate all you've done, including efficiency and innovation. I'll now turn it back over to members of the council. Councilman DeCecio, please.
Yeah, just one, I saw on my notes here, you know, we talked about merit and longevity. What the public needs, those are pay raises and bonuses. How much is built in? I know you said 2.5%. Is that about 21, 22 million for next year that's built in?
Mayor, Councilman DeCecio, the 2.5% represents just the total growth of expenditures that are outside of that area of pay and outside of pension costs, so it's all the other, all the other costs for the city. When we look at the five-year forecast that was provided in the city council report, we do show the costs each year attributed to merit pay and to the increased longevity or productivity enhancement pay. $5 million in the general fund is the amount for annually for merit increases, and then the increased amount of productivity enhancement pay is about $200,000.
So what is, I mean, I want to make sure we're talking, with the public understanding, what is the total amount that's budgeted for those years? You're talking about the marginal difference, is that correct, from year to year?
The, I'm talking about the, when it comes to merit, I'm talking about the total, which is about $5 million in the general fund. The $200,000 does account for the amount that's an increase over the previous year.
So there's only, based on what is it today, if we've got $6 million in this year's budget, because next year is a new budget, how much is the total amount, including these years that we put in there moving forward? It's got to be over $20 million. It's been that way in the past.
The question I think you're asking for is really, what's the total amount of longevity in the general fund?
And merit, yeah.
Well, the total amount of merit is shown there, it's about $5 million.
Correct.
The reason why we show the increment to longevity is, if you did away with longevity in its entirety, that is a pay cut to people who are currently receiving longevity. The only addition in the growth of the budget is the increment above what we're currently paying in our contracts.
I get that part, and we've had that discussion, but what is that total amount? 12 million, just for the longevity part?
That would be my approximate amount, off the top of my head, about 11 or 12 million dollars, the total, including what's been paid year over year.
Right, and so if you look at it, and longevity is basically what the private sector would call bonuses that are built in. And bonuses generally, in the private sector, they're considered to be a one-time event. So when you look at merit, those are what most people would consider to be pay raises, longevity or bonuses. So approximately $17 million in the budget ahead of us is about, with pay raises and bonuses that are in there. And we can look at it different ways, but I look at it in totality. And then, the last part of it, I do want to tell you, and I think Richard Ray brought up a really good point here, staff has done an incredible job on this. Mario, you've developed into an exemplary budget director, I mean, like beyond off-the-charts person. These budget crises that are occurring here, you don't own them. The political body owns this, because of the policies that the city puts in place. So like Councilman Valenzuela said, the political body owns the problems and the benefits here because of the policies that they put in place. So if we see a problem here, do not blame the city staff, you have to blame the individuals that are up here for being responsible for this budget and the issues that we're having. Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor, you had a question?
I do, based on what Councilman DeCecio asked. So let me ask this question a little bit in a different way. So between 2015, 2016, and 2019, 2020, how much is the increase from merit and longevity? Not what's happened in the past, starting today, because you're assuming that that's always going to be there, that's part of your assumption, correct? So how much is it either year to year, and I can multiply by, I guess, four, or do you know off the top of your head, how much of this 46 million to the negative, or 75 million to the positive? Ed's shaking his head, so I think he understands what I'm asking, is pay raises. Automatic pay raises are probably just going to happen.
Vice Mayor, what you see there on the chart is the amount each year that's attributable to merit increases and increased longevity. Now, what doesn't show, which makes it a little bit more complicated, is money that's not paid for merit, so in the previous year, if an employee retires that was receiving a merit, that's not there anymore, or an employee reaches the maximum of their pay range, and they're no longer receiving a merit increase, so you don't necessarily see amounts that are coming down.
I guess I'm not expecting the exact dollar figure, just how much would that be between 2015, 16, and 2019, 20?
So what we show there is about a $5 to $6 million increase each year, or amount each year for merit pay, and about $200,000 each year for longevity. And so, are you, you're wanting the total?
So we're adding, I mean, it's cumulative, so if you're starting at 2015, 16 is the base, then you'd be going up to, you'd be going up $5 million, and then it would be $10 million, $15 million, let's just say it's $5 million a year. $20 million of our potential $46 million shortfall in 2020 is these automatic pay raises, because that's $20 million of our budget from that year, extra that we're not paying right now. Is that a true statement, or?
I think that's, that may be an approximation, but it's an overstatement, because as Mario said, it doesn't go in a straight line like that. You know, people retire and leave, and they don't get merit anymore, and somebody, so...
But on average, it sounds like, I was taking the lone numbers.
On average, it's 5.2 million a year, over four years.
So, I'll round down, for our purposes here, and it's over four years, that's $20 million. So I mean, if the public was looking at this, they'd say, well, wait a minute, your numbers would actually be 26 and 95, instead of 46 and 75, if we weren't doing that.
Correct.
I'm not saying we shouldn't be doing it, I'm not even going to get into that argument, I'm just saying, it's a considerable, it's a considerable chunk of our deficit in 2019, 2020.
We show those as separate items, because it does indicate that it is a decision point for the mayor and the council as we move forward in contract negotiations.
And that was discussed last time. Employees took the immediate hit rather than the merit increases and longevity increases, and if I were their negotiator, I would have done the same thing. So that was a wise choice. I mean, you can see it highlighted here, because even if you're taking the cut that Councilman Valenzuela was referencing, in the end, it still makes more sense to still have this in there. And the public just needs to know, of that $46 million potential deficit, 20 million of it is pay raises. I mean, bottom line, there's no real way around that. I mean, it could be a little more, it could be a little less, but it's roughly, that's roughly about accurate.
Right, and the point of merit is that it's a reflection of the growing skill of those people receiving that.
If it's, not debating whether we should be doing it, not debating whether it's warranted, I'm just saying, half that $46 million figure roughly is pay increases. So, I mean, it sounds like it's a statement nobody's disputing.
Mayor, may I add something to what Councilman Waring?
Of course, of course, Councilman.
If you look at it also, Councilman Waring, as bonuses or longevity being a one-time event, which the majority of the public sees it that way, you have to add in an additional, over what, three-year period were you looking at? Four-year period? An additional 48, approximately 48 million on top of that, just on longevity. So add your 20, add your 48, that's an additional $68 million you have right there.
I have to dispute that, because longevity, that base of longevity, if you take that away, that is a cut to current compensation. That is not additive to the deficit. That base of longevity is not additive to the deficit. If you remove it, it removes, but it exists today and carries forward. It's the increment that is what is part of that.
But longevity, as we've been told many times, is a bonus.
It is really not a bonus in our system. I mean, you can call it a bonus, but it's not what employees, it's not the way the private sector gives bonuses.
But Ed, it is what the public was told repeatedly through 2010, 2011, and through 2012, that that was a bonus.
I never said it was a bonus, I wouldn't call it a bonus.
Well, the previous city manager did, and we use that as a foundation. But either way, it is a bonus, because it is supposed to be a one-time event. But in any respect, if you look at that, that creates a structural issue here at the city of Phoenix, and that's a debate we're going to have at a later date as well. So, it comes again into the policies and how these things are created and how these things are put in place. And it just lacks a level of transparency that needs to occur here at the city. It just does. I mean, they need to be able to see that, the public needs to see what that impact is moving forward. It's huge.
I want to clarify. Okay, Vice Mayor wants to clarify.
So, so just, not disputing or changing, just saying, for my purposes, I picked the start being 2016, 2017, because that'll be the start of new labor contracts. I'm just assuming, we can't change the past. We can debate the past, but we can't change the past. So I was only talking, just so the public is clear, about the incremental increases, which I think we agreed to establish at roughly $5 million a year, and they just add $5 million a year for four years, that gets you to 20 million. I just, I just think the public needs to know, we will be voting on this at a later date, we'll have a new contract, we're not talking about changing the contracts we're in right now, just starting at that base point of July 1st, 2016. It's roughly a $20 million increase, assuming, which you are in these analyses, doing the same thing over and over, we'd have, I guess, two more contracts, that contract and the next contract in there, assuming they contain the merit and longevity. If you have a $46 million deficit, if that's the way it worked out in 2019, 2020, about half that would be pay raises for employees coming out of those contracts that included longevity and merit, taking all else being equal. This is a big if, but that's what we're doing here. And that's a true statement, based on what I'm hearing from you, roughly, assuming $5 million a year. Right?
My hesitation is, it's a very complicated calculation to figure out with people coming and going, what it actually adds to.
I'm saying roughly, I'm just saying roughly. I mean, how much could it deviate? There aren't that many people retiring, it can't be that much of a change.
And as an example, is if someone retires who was at the top step of their pay, they were no longer receiving merits, but the employee that comes in to replace them starts at the bottom. So what's not being shown here is the decrease in pay that we see from year to year when there's turnover. And so when there's, when there's someone who goes from a much higher step that they've gotten to because of the merit increases, and then the employee, the position turns over, then that pay decrease comes back out. So that's why it's complicated to talk about the cumulative effect over several years of those merit increases, because...
How about we simplify it, and we just, I just ask, right now, for the last four, Mario, do you have a chance to finish?
I just wanted to explain that those decreases are not being shown from year to year, when those pay, when those pay rates come down for certain positions with that turnover.
Vice Mayor.
I guess I'm asking for, you're right, I'm sorry for interrupting, Mario, that's my fault, and I apologize. So I'd like the previous four years, so 2015, 16, 2014, 15, you get my drift? The last four years, the next time we discuss this, or I'd like it as soon as possible, but next time we get a chance to discuss this, I want to bring it up again, what was merit and longevity? What was the actual increase for years that have already happened? We'll just see what that number is. I think that's a fair, we're not, we're not, we're assuming static number of employees, so that shouldn't really change. Yeah, they won't be exactly the same, but it'll give us, you know, if it's 16 million, then I'll feel like 20 isn't unreasonable. If it's, if it's 8 million, then that's something different. But based on what you're saying, it sounds like it's going to be more like, probably just short of 20 is my guess. But I'd like to know what those last four years' worth of numbers are. Sorry again for interrupting, I apologize.
Mayor, can I add on to that?
Councilman, please.
When you're doing that, to figure out where that is in the budget, because those become part of the budget moving forward, so that becomes ingrained. Those pay raises actually accumulate, so when you do a 3% increase, it's a 3% increase on all those movements that went upwards. So let's take a look at that as well, with the percentage increases every single year. Now, if you look at total compensation, our average compensation per employee at the city, we got what, 14,000, between 12 and 14,000, depending what our unfilled are, is north of $107,000 per employee. It's gone up every single year, every year it's gone up. One year, one year just barely went up. So when we're talking about all the cuts and everything else, the total compensation, because that's what somebody in the business community would look at, what is the total cost per employee, that's everything, all in, taxes, insurance, the whole thing, has been going up every single year. It's an unsustainable number. 107,000, north of 107,000, is unsustainable for any organization.
All right, any other comments by members of this council? This is not scheduled for a vote, I'll just make a short comment, that to propose a balanced budget this year, our budget hearings will probably be small affairs, hopefully short affairs, probably boring affairs, but that's a very good thing, Mr. City Manager, that after where we were a couple of years ago, with the projected budget deficit for this budget cycle, to be in the position we are in, took a lot of work by a lot of people. First, it took excellent work on innovation and efficiency, Richard Ray and other leading citizens, thank you very much. Councilman Gates is not here to hear these kudos, he's probably watching on television or later on. Councilman Gates deserves a lot of credit for leading this city with innovation and efficiency, and that has saved us 100-plus million dollars over the course of many years. That is a tremendous accomplishment. The people of the city of Phoenix, we owe them a huge debt of gratitude for supporting pension reform in 2013, saving the city over $600 million over the next 20-plus years. This council had the foresight to end pension spiking in this city, saving over an additional $200 million over the next 20, 25 years. We owe a huge debt of gratitude to the employees of the city of Phoenix, who by taking significant sacrifices in the last negotiation, put us in this position. That's all, both public safety employees, police and fire, and civilian employees. We would not be in this position and present a balanced budget to the people of the city of Phoenix this fiscal year if it weren't for the leadership demonstrated by our city employees in accepting those sacrifices. I, as mayor in this council, a huge debt of gratitude for our city employees, and of course, the willingness of this council to make the tough choices on elimination of positions, which puts an additional burden on our city employees as they continue to do more with less, provide outstanding service to the citizens of Phoenix with less resources. It was said earlier by Councilman Valenzuela and others, that to be at this position was truly a team effort, and I'm excited that this budget year, we're in a position to present a balanced budget to the citizens of Phoenix. We were in a position just a couple of years ago of looking at 30-plus million dollars of deficit, and exactly what the city manager said is exactly what I, and I know this council is ready, willing, and able to do, and that's roll up our sleeves and get the work on future years. We have, all of us on this council, myself especially, have inherited strong fiscal practices by previous leadership, both from the management side and on the elected official side. We're going to continue to demonstrate strong fiscal management practices, at least while I'm mayor of this city, and that's a tradition I believe is going to continue in the future as well. And so the people of the city of Phoenix should be very, very, feel very strong about the fact that this city and this council will continue to demonstrate the right, smart fiscal practices. So this is very good news, and I think we're going to have, continue to roll up our sleeves, work hard. We're going to need the state to be involved, and I really want to say thank you to Representatives of Arizona Police Association and professional firefighters of Arizona, who I know are pushing hard to get that pension reform done at the state level through PSPRS, so that we can save even more money on pension reform moving forward. Any additional comments by this council? With that, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, and I know Councilman Pastor has to leave soon, so we'll try to get through as reasonably quickly as possible. This is an area of great interest by the citizens of Phoenix, and that is our public safety funds forecast, and most importantly, our plan for hiring additional public safety officers, particularly police officers. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. You're going to hear a theme here continued, which is forward-looking, tough decision-making by the elected officials to set us on a path, and that's what happened with our public safety funds. As Councilman DeCecio said, one of our biggest... one of our biggest challenges in the last five years has been dealing with reduced public safety staffing, while we've had to also address negative balances in the funding for public safety, police, and fire. We have good news to report, and that is, first, that hiring is moving forward and will now begin to outpace the expected retirements. That means officer and firefighter field counts will begin going up from where they are today. Second, the funds which for years have run negative balances will be balanced by the end of next year, following the plan that you have put into place. And so, today we're going to update that, and Mario's going to start with just a brief background of what these funds are and how we get them balanced, and end with a conceptual hiring plan, and also some action from the Transportation Infrastructure Subcommittee.
Thank you, Ed. I will go very quickly with the background. Mayor and council, this is review for you. Prop, the, the three dedicated funds that go to public safety are Proposition 301, which 70% of that goes to police, 25% goes to fire, the 5% goes to block watch. It's a portion of our sales tax, a tenth of the, 1/10th of a percent of the increment. There's also public safety enhancement, which is 2% utilities tax, comes through franchise agreements set up in 2005 with utilities. Again, 62% of that is dedicated to police, 38% to fire. And then finally, Proposition 1, also known as Public Safety Expansion, 2/10ths of an increment on the sales tax. Voters approved that in 2007. 80% of that goes directly to police, and the other 20% goes directly to fire. Those funds can be used for nothing else but those purposes. No other services can receive that money. The one thing I want to point out on Proposition 1, the ballot required the hiring of 400 officers. After the, the item was approved, a total of 469 officers had been hired in that fund through fiscal year 2010, 2011. The challenge is, when the Great Recession hit, we ran into big problems with these funds, and the sales taxes that were dedicated to these areas quickly declined. So, if we look back at 2007, 2008, that's the fiscal year that Proposition 1 was approved, we can see that that year, the revenue actually exceeded the costs in those funds combined. But then the recession hit, also, that is at a time when the, the costs for public safety positions was growing as well. So, what we saw was five straight years of annual funding shortfalls, where the expenses were higher than the revenue in those funds, all the way through 2012, 13 fiscal year is what we saw, those annual shortfalls. This chart represents what would have happened in those fund balances had no action been taken. We would be looking at this year, a negative fund balance of about $160 million by the end of the year. But the good news is that the council did act. The council acted quickly and took an action to bring those funds into balance over multiple years without laying off police officers or firefighters. In 2010, a plan was adopted by the council. That plan relied on attrition, and so that meant keeping vacant positions, sworn officers, and sworn firefighter positions open to accrue savings. The plan also relied on, on seeking grants, and the city's been very successful in achieving grants for firefighters, federal safer grants to pay for 98 firefighters. Also, the city, the city council has pushed for Department of Justice cops grants, which have funded hiring of 15 officers. The, so, all those actions, in addition to efficiencies, have contributed to the plan moving forward. I just want to take a quick second to, to recognize my staff, in particular Jeff Barton, who's worked very, very hard. He was an instrumental part of developing this plan. He's monitored the plan over the years and made adjustments to ensure the city remained on track. And Jeff has been very successful and done an outstanding job, and been very responsive to the needs of the police and fire departments. The good news now is that we see in 2013, 14, and 1415, the revenue is exceeding the costs. So, we're able to start bringing those funds back into balance. And you can see actually what has happened. In 2012, 13, that bar on the left was a big negative. That was a negative $37 million, negative balance, when you look at all the funds combined. What we're looking at for this year is negative 3 million. So, huge amount of progress over those years. And then as we look to 15, 16, we actually see positive fund balances for those funds. Looking ahead, we, we continue to see the revenue exceed the costs, and we need that to happen for a few years while those fund balances are paid off and come into balance. And then in 16, 17, we see the revenue and the costs start to line up, and we'll see that going forward from that point. What that means is that, as the city manager mentioned, we can move forward with firefighter and officer hiring in a way that outpaces the attrition and the expected retirements. So, we see for the fire department, the planned new hires in the current fiscal year are 75. Next year, there will be 93 more. And you can see each year thereafter, how much we're, we're expected to hire. Now, it's also important that we show the expected retirement. And so, you see the numbers there for the expected retirements in each of the fiscal year. And finally, the net is what the number is of the filled sworn positions that we will have each of those fiscal years. The good news is, in the fire department, we'll be able to be over 1,600 positions, ultimately at a, at a number of about 1,614 filled firefighters. In the police department, again, good news moving forward. We have, we are in the process, the city is in the process of hiring new police officers as we speak, 15 this in the current fiscal year. Next fiscal year, we expect to hire 110 officers. The year after that, 130. And then in 17, 18, and 18, 19, you can see that we continue to hire new officers. Alongside that is the number of expected retirements and the projected filled, filled sworn counts each year. The good news here, and this is in contrast to what we've seen over the last several years, the good news here is that each year, those filled counts in the police department will continue to rise, because the new hires will outpace those retirements. We will see those numbers continue to rise until we reach about 3,000 officers in 18, 19. Another thing that's important for us to talk about today is an action that was taken by the Transportation and Infrastructure Subcommittee a week ago, when there was discussion on the recommendation from the Citizens Committee on the Future of Phoenix Transportation. One of the things that was talked about was a total of $16 million that goes to public transit from the general fund each year in support of the city's transit operations. The Subcommittee, as part of their recommendation to move forward, the transit plan of, that came to them in the, in the recommendation, was to actually move that forward and, which would allow the city to free up that $16 million that goes to the transit, free that $16 million up to be able to hire additional police officers. That $16 million would, would allow the city to hire and sustain 125 more officers. And when we, when we add that into what we saw just a minute ago, there's a potential here that 125 officers would add, be added next year. That's, that's only under the condition that the council approves that recommendation and the voters approve that transit plan. If that were to happen, you would see 125 added to the numbers that I showed you just a minute ago, and the final filled count in 18, 19 would be 3,125.
Mayor and council, thank you for your leadership and patience through these years as we've balanced these funds. And the action today would be to adopt the conceptual hiring plans, and further with the Transportation Infrastructure Subcommittee recommendation on the transit funding, were the vote to be successful, to use that $16 million to add 125 officers to the plans, provided voters approve it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that, for that presentation. Because Councilwoman Williams made the motion transit committee, I'm going to ask her if she has a motion, see if a second, then I have card, and then we'll take any comments from members of the council. Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a recommendation that comes from the Transportation Committee due to the good work by the Citizens Transportation Committee. We looked at this very closely, and if the council forwards to the voters the transit plan as the Subcommittee approved it, and if the voters approved it, it would then free up the $16 million, or could free up the $16 million we currently allocate out of the general fund to transit, could be switched to hiring police. And I make the motion that we conceptionally include that today. If it passes, that we would be able to hire additional and fully staff. I think it's in the year 18, if I remember right, we would have our full complement of police officers, with no additional increase in revenue from the regular sources.
So, the recommendation, the motion is to support, the motion that came out of, and successful motion coming out of the Transportation Subcommittee, to make a commitment by this council that if the transit tax passes, the voters to, to turn that into an enterprise fund and utilize the savings for hiring police officers would add 100.
Not necessarily an enterprise fund. It would probably be a spatial fund of some dedicated restrictive fund, but it would, we could then allocate the $16 million from the general fund to the police department.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Mayor, I'll second that.
We have a motion. We have a second. I have two cards on this item. Ms. Greta Rogers, did you wish to provide testimony on this item? And then Ms. Barker.
Greta Rogers, I'm not going to speak with regard to the transit portion of this. I'm simply going to speak on the essential, and that's in caps, need to augment both our police and fire departments. And I'm totally in favor of this. It's been long overdue, and I understand the reason why we have not been able to do it in previous years. I've been here since point of beginning, prior to point of beginning. I'm now starting my 17th year as a public practicing citizen. Understand citizens who are here with us today, and even staff members, you say you're going to hire X number of police officers. It's not like hiring somebody to work at Walmart, or even somebody to come and work in a department at City Hall. These people are very, very long and arduously vetted before they're even approved to go to the academy. That's four months long. Then if they pass the stringent training at the academy and are certified to be a policeman, they go through a year or more probationary period with trained, experienced officers before they're ever allowed to be on their own, and even then, they really aren't alone. It probably takes somewhere between four and eight years for a policeman to become experienced, totally knowledgeable, totally dependable on the job. That's what we're talking about. For fire, it's the same thing. They have a training period that's a little less in time than police, but equally stringent, if not more so, because of all the stuff those people have to wear when they go to a scene. I mean, I don't know how they even walk. But then they go on probationary the same way. This is a long, arduous process, and we need these people desperately. And the departments, even more importantly, need them desperately. This is for the public safety of the entire community, and we cannot nickel and dime on this anymore. We can nickel and dime on a lot of things, but not on this, and don't do it, any single one of you. Thank you.
I think Ms. Barker, I'm assuming Ms. Rogers. Ms. Barker is next. I apologize.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Diane Barker in District 7. And there are some elements of this I agree and others I don't, but I'd like to make a statement that I come from a military family. My father was a colonel in the Air Force, and other generations of my family have served this country. I believe in protection. Actually, my mother said nobody wants peace more than an off, than a soldier, and that's where I am today. Rather than going out into wars, I very much want the best defense for the United States and the city I live in. I remember the mayor stating that, I think that if I have this right, he said that we live in a relatively, you know, good community, you know, that doesn't have a lot of crime in general for the size of our community. I have lived going around the valley with the transit and a bicycle, day and night, as a woman without a gun, in every area. So, that is my testament. I've learned to really realize there's much better in people than not. We do need police going out. We've got domestic violence. We have drug problems. We have things like that. Efficiencies. Why? You know, if I called the police, you know, Garcia says, well, they showed up, didn't they? Six cars came for a guy with a backpack that was trespassing on a property, and, you know, he came out and he had like a dozen beers in it. Okay. So, they, they showed up. But well, look at this when you're hiring, and look at your practices. What is it really costing for the 10-4 work week? These are the kind of things, okay? Now, the buses, we've got great bus drivers, trained excellently. It's flexible system. Transit 2000 was supposed to put 2/3 of the money in there. These, these police that are coming now happen to be for light rail, so we need to look at what we're putting forward in the public. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Barker. Okay, so, Councilwoman Williams, I've made the motion, has been seconded. Other comments by this council? Councilwoman Valenzuela, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This is another, another piece of very good news. There's no greater responsibility to government at any level, as far as I'm concerned, than that, than public safety. And just a few years ago, three years ago, I remember sitting on this dais and realizing, and of course, this was realized way before even considering politics, but, you know, how could the city go five years, approximately five years, without hiring a police officer? How could we find ourselves in a position being, you know, hundreds of police officers down? Now, you know, I asked the question, but I mean, I certainly realize what the issue is. It's, it was a, you know, a budget issue and recession and, and so on. And, and of course, immediately, collectively, as a team, again, collaborative effort, getting to work, getting out to DC, looking for cops grants, finding opportunities for, you know, adding additional police officers, you know, we, one year, we were able to add, I believe, 11 police officers through the, just, you know, just through the budget process, where we picked up, you know, some of our reserves. And, and again, I go back just, you know, about 30 minutes ago, talking about the last agenda item, going back to those tough decisions that had to be made to, to balance the budget. But those things also allowing us to expedite the hire of police officers. So, it goes back to working as a team, you know, working responsibly, and, and making those tough decisions, because these are the benefits of those tough decisions. So, now, we are talking about getting to a point where we will be fully staffed. And, you know, look, I want to thank our city manager, Ed Zirker, your entire team. I'll thank, you know, again, every, every city employee. Mayor Stanton, I want to thank you, because at the end of the day, you know, you were, you were leading this council. You were setting the agenda, and on these tough decisions, you were also leading the way on those as well. I think if you were to check the, the voting records on those. This is exciting. Now, you know, of course, that's my first comment, because I, I just believe that public safety is an important priority. And in fact, you know, when, when we are facing, you know, the, the reality that we are hundreds of police officers down, I don't see how, I mean, that's where we need to start, obviously. But this is a transit item. I believe in transit as well. You know, we need more light rail. It's not just light rail, multimodal, we need a multimodal city. We want to become more of a multimodal city, but just light rail itself, you know, when you consider the first 20 miles of light rail, has a price tag of approximately 1.4, 1.4 billion. fourth, one point four billion dollars and already an investment of more than seven billion dollars. I don't know how anyone can say that it is not a positive investment. I'd like to see more light rail. I'll speak for, you know, my constituents in District Five. I'd like to see as much light rail as possible, in fact, as much of that positive investment as possible, but not only for the district, in all fairness, throughout the entire city. So I, I believe in this particular item. I want to thank Councilwoman Williams, who's been a champion on both of these, whether it be public safety and certainly transit. But to make that motion and to make it, to have the, just the foresight and the leadership to, you know, think that if this thing were to pass and if it were to save X amount of, you know, millions, in this case, I believe about sixteen million, then that money should be set aside to help get our police, police department staffed up. That's an additional one hundred twenty-five police officers. And, and that, you know, that's a win all the way around. So I, I am fully supportive of the, of the motion for everything it stands for, both public safety and of course transit.
All right, thank you very much. Other comments from the councilman, D'Amico, please.
I am so glad you said that, Councilman Valenzuela, because this is a transit proposal. What you have here, and this is to the police officers that are watching this on TV, remember when your pay raise was taken away from you? Same thing is happening here. I'm not going to be a part of that. I'm actually going to vote against this. I have always been supportive of increasing our police officers. I like that part of it, but tying this to transit, tying police officers and their families and the public to a transit vote is not only immoral, but I think it's unethical. And that's what the City of Phoenix is doing here. With this vote, you're going to see a buy-off. It's literally telling the police department, trust us. Well, you shouldn't. You saw what happened during the labor negotiations. So what is being done here is literally to try and pull that initiative that you've worked so hard to put on the, on the ground floor and tie it to a transit vote that has a thirty billion dollar boondoggle, where you're looking at a light rail mile, light rail or train, whatever you want to call it, a cost of operating and construction of two hundred and nine million dollars per mile. That's what these police officers are being tied to. You're giving them a false promise here today, and that's what's occurring here. So I'm, I'm not going to be a part of that. I'm going to be voting no on this, but I do support the part where it does add the police officers, it gets us past the attrition level. But I've got to ask staff on this. The numbers that we see in here for the police officers, Mario, those are authorized positions or are they actually filled positions?
Because there's a difference. What we're talking about here are filled positions.
Okay, good. So when we look at twenty-seven seventy-eight officers on the ground, twenty-fourteen fifteen with the new hires of fifteen people in this budget year, that puts us up to twenty-seven seventy-eight. Is that correct?
That's what we're projecting by the end of this fiscal year, correct?
And I think this is a much better plan. Unfortunately, it takes us up forward where we're going to be looking at, and I like the, you know, we've talked about this repeatedly, at the very least, we need to get to attrition. We're not fully there when we look at the amount of shortage of police officers we have, but it puts us on a better position right now. I like the fact that you're doing this. I think it's a step. It's not enough to get us to the levels that we need to, but at the very least, it's a positive growth movement, which I believe we needed to do a long time ago, but we're doing it now, and I like that. But I am not going to vote for this because this tie to transit, I think, is a boondoggle. It ties police officers to a bad idea and one that could possibly fail at the ballot box, and you're giving the police officers another level of false hope and the public. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Vice Mayor and then Councilman Valenzuela.
So this vote today, is this a vote on a tax increase? Not at all, right? Okay. It's really just the idea that we want to hire more police officers. I do think tying it to what I consider an eight billion dollar tax increase, new taxes, that's not police related, as we talked about yesterday, Ed. I mean, unless you dispute the number, I mean, we called, you called Maria Hyatt when I was in, you were in my office. So I'll just assume, we'll assume maybe that's on the low end, eight billion dollar increase. You know, I just don't want people to be confused out there that somehow, the good news is you're getting a hundred and twenty-five police officers out of that. Obviously, eight billion dollars would hire a lot more. So I just don't want anybody who's watching and heard this discussion to get confused about that. But this vote right here is just ratifying the plan to replace previously lost officers. Basically, is one way to phrase it, right? Okay.
Mayor, Vice Mayor.
Is this any vote ratifying the transit plan itself?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, what this does is, there were two charts we showed. One was, as it stands today, back one more, as it stands today, that's the police plan. There was a fire plan earlier. If there is a vote by the public on a transit plan that frees up sixteen million dollars, that sixteen million dollars would go to the next one and add that number of police officers.
Thank you.
It is contingent upon a vote by the public.
And the money otherwise, if it passes, and we haven't decided to send it to the ballot yet, I'll be voting against it, so I'll just spare everybody the suspense and just say, now I'm voting against it. I'm sure, I'm sure you'll be up at night pondering this, this momentous announcement for many nights, but I guess I would just say, you know, if it were to pass, even if it's over my objection and without my vote, I would like us to hire more police officers. So I guess that's meritorious. I just don't want the public to think in any way that I'm ratifying the overall transit plan, frankly, in any way, shape, or form. There are probably, I'm sure, good parts about it, we'll discuss that later, but I just don't want people to be lured in with a little bit of a bait and switch, which I think is what Councilman D'Amico was getting at. But if it were to pass, then this would be a meritorious use of the money, I would argue that. So, so we're not voting on any tax increases or anything today. I think we've established that.
Mayor, after, if it is passed.
I think Vice Mayor wanted an answer to his question, and then we'll get to the Councilman.
I mean, I think it's a yes or no answer, so.
No, this is not a vote on a tax. This is simply saying we would add one hundred, per the Transportation Infrastructure Subcommittee, that we would add one hundred twenty-five officers to the plan if voters approve the transit plan. That sixteen million dollars would add a hundred and twenty-five to these.
Several, several ifs in there. We've got to put it on the ballot, and it has to pass. All right, thank you, I appreciate it.
Mayor, I got to say, you're driving me crazy saying it's a transit plan because it's a transportation.
Transportation, thank you, yes.
It's much more than that, and.
The plan as presented by Mary Peters Leadership Committee, presented to the Transportation Committee, does include elements of light rail, improved transit, improved bus rapid transit, improve, street improvements, et cetera, so it's a comprehensive transportation.
Streets and bridges are in there too.
Councilman D'Amico, had some additional thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, once, you know, we'll see what the voters end up doing. I'm just telling the police officers and the public that this is, they're being sold another bill of goods here in this so-called plan. It is a transit plan. It is basically funding light rail that's just ridiculous. I mean, no, I don't know of anywhere in the country it costs, even maybe in Washington DC when they built it, I can't imagine they spent two hundred and nine million dollars per mile, but maybe they did. I don't know how they did it and how that ever becomes sustainable. There was a couple of other things that were critical in this. The key words that we heard today, I've got so many points here, it's just, I want to make sure I bring this up because I want to make sure it gets on the record. One, what happens after an election? I mean, I will always vote to put more police officers on the street, you know, at least until we get back to the point. So what happens with those monies? That's a decision we can make after that November election, but it's the way this is being sold to the public and the way it's being sold to the police officers, I think, is just very disrespectful. The other part of it deals with the special fund. You heard that terminology, it was kind of slid in there, that this is going to create possibly a special fund or an enterprise department. Basically, that's like creating a thirty billion dollar slush fund. When you do this, you take them off budget, it has less transparency, less view of the public on there, and who knows, you know, it just very little, less oversight than what occurs on the general budget. If you look at it when we do the budgeting, we always talk about the general fund. Very, you're talking thirty billion dollars going into a special fund, thirty billion. It doesn't make sense. It's illogical, it's wrong for the public, and I'm going to do everything I can to let the public know what's really going on behind closed doors on this tax and how it gets tied into all these kinds of things that I think that are not right. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor.
Thank you very much. Well, I just wanted to take the one, because I was the one that used enterprise fund. Let me be very specific what I mean. The, I think as it came out of the Transportation Committee, and will be voted on by this council, the proposal is to make our transportation depart, the transit department here at the city an enterprise fund.
No.
No.
Okay.
No.
Correct me, I apologize because I want to make sure that it was clear because.
Special revenue fund.
It will have.
I apologize.
Be a special fund with restricted funds.
Yes.
For the purpose overseen by a special committee made up of the current committee members and Transit Commission members to make sure that it's, it's allocated appropriately and as the plan is designed.
Okay, I apologize for that. I want to make sure that my understanding is clear in that the ideas that general fund money that currently goes to transit would no longer go to transit. I'm utilizing the term that I'm comfortable with, I guess you need to be, but as an enterprise fund, and I guess that's an important legal distinction, but the, the, the vote came out of Transportation Committee saying if this goes to voters and they pass it, that no, general fund would no longer go to transit. And the recommendation from Councilwoman Williams and the committee was to take the general fund savings and dedicate it to hiring police officers. That's what we're voting on today. Vice Mayor.
Mayor, I've been waving you down about ten minutes.
I apologize, Councilman Valenzuela.
I, I thank you, because I, I take a little, I take offense because I don't think this vote is unethical at all. I, I think it is smart business sense to have a multimodal city. I think it helps our economy thrive, you know, I, again, in case someone, in case anyone did not hear these numbers, when you consider light rail and the twenty-mile stretch, the, the initial stretch, the largest in, in the country in, in one, one shot that touches Mesa and Tempe and Phoenix, that price tag was about one point four billion dollars. The return is already well over seven billion dollars, and that's a pretty good ROI. It makes business sense. It's good for our city. We're talking new streets and sidewalks, transit-oriented development. I'd like to see more of that in, in District Five. In fact, I think I'd like to see it throughout the City of Phoenix, throughout the valley. It makes us more of a multimodal city. So I believe in this, in this, this proposal, what, what makes it even a better proposal is the foresight of just realizing that this is, this could add sixteen million dollars, which can be used for police officers. Now, would it make, would it be a better plan if, if maybe we didn't put that element in? So I remember when I was elected, again, the plan, the acceptable plan, the expected plan, was that the city would not hire a police officer for five years. Five years, okay? We haven't applied for a cops grant in many years. We went, not only we applied, but we were awarded the largest cops grant in the country that year. Should we not have done that? You know, we were able to add eleven officers to, in a, in a budget process, found the money for that. Should we not have done that? You know, these tough decisions that were made, these tough decisions that were made time and time again to get us to a place of solvency or towards, you know, long-term solvency, things like pension reform and, and others, allowing us to hire police officers sooner than expected, these are all very good practices that I, that I stand by. I'm sure the majority of this council would, those who voted for these things anyway. And, and I got to tell you, so, so I, not only do I, do I believe in the plan for more transit and becoming more of a multimodal city, and in this case, valley for that matter, the fact that this would also, in addition to that, put a hundred and twenty-five police officers on the street, that, that is an added benefit. I wanted to clarify that.
Thank you very much, Councilman Valenzuela. Vice Mayor said he had one sentence, and then I think because of people's schedules, we're going to try to have a vote. Council, Councilman, Gallego, I apologize afterwards.
Okay, tell me.
Tight.
All right, thank you. I guess I would just say, in sum, I'm against transit. Trying to make it one sentence, I'm using commas. You're welcome. So I would say, I may be against transit, I may be against the overall plan, but if this, if it does pass, if it passes council, it passes at the ballot, this would at least direct some money against something I don't particularly care for, the light rail. It redirects money to police. Is that a fair statement? And I, I think that justifies support because I think the tax dollars are better used for police than they are for some of the other stuff that was discussed. All right.
No offense.
One sentence broadly defined. Councilman.
When we approved a budget last year, I had made a motion inspired by Councilwoman Williams that we prioritize, as revenue became available, that it should go to hiring new officers, and we are following through on that commitment today. We are creating this revenue if the transit and transportation initiative passes, there will be money in the general fund that can be redirected. So it is based on that, that the money will be available, and we've looked creatively throughout our city, this seemed like the best opportunity to go, go forward with that commitment. So I think that's very important, that this is a plan that we've been working on for quite a while, based on discussion and the priorities of our community that we heard during our last community budget hearing. Had an opportunity to talk with the police chief yesterday about some of the things that would happen if we did this, and at maybe around three thousand officers, we could, once again, have the staffing levels to separate the Estrella and Maryville precincts. So just wanted to make sure that is still something that seems reasonable to our city manager.
I'll ask Assistant City Manager Milton DeHoney to talk about that. He's been specifically focusing on that police effort.
Mayor, Councilmember Gallego, if in fact we are able to get to those levels, certainly is something that we would look at and consider with the police leadership. But we, we have duly noted your request, you have been consistent in making it, and we have not forgotten that at this point in time, it's not feasible, but in the future, when the numbers are back up, it is certainly something that we could consider.
Wonderful. That is definitely a priority of all of us who represent those communities and requested data on the precincts to see, because we've gotten a lot of reports that there might be increases in particularly in property crimes in those areas, and we are paying attention and responding to those concerns and hoping to use this as an opportunity.
Mayor.
I'm not done yet.
I think, I think Councilwoman had some additional comments.
Sorry about.
Another thing that's very important to us is making sure that we work with our communities and that we have police force that's familiar with those communities. So I wanted to suggest that we might, in the motion, also, if, if the Councilwoman Williams is, is willing, say that, making sure that we have a process that reaches out to people who have not traditionally been part of our police department and make sure that we have a robust recruitment process before we open up the opportunities for the new jobs, that that's something that I would love to see us do as, as part of this particular step forward. We had the opportunity this week to speak with some of the people from the Twin Cities about some of the issues they're facing with their community and trying to build relationships with diverse communities that, and they really suggested that having officers who understand what's going on in these diverse communities are very important. I also represent a lot of the Somali community here and have been trying to make that a priority of challenge the police department to have a refugee advisory board, but I think we do need to think about these things as we move forward and make sure that we take the time to not rush into recruitment, but to reach out and educate people about what a great job it is to be part of the City of Phoenix Police Department. So I don't know, Councilwoman Williams, if you'd be willing to amend the motion to.
So I think the, the issue is making, making sure that we're going to be hiring a lot of officers, we haven't done in a long time, and making sure that as we do that hiring, we get the diversity that really represents this city, and that makes us a better police force as a result, and that we have the, kind of the most proactive recruitment processes to ensure that we end up with a diverse police force. We all know how important that is for community policing and to build as much trust in the community, which obviously we're trying to do with our community outreach, the reinvigoration through Councilman Nowakowski's leadership of our community outreach program through the police department, how critically important it is that the department look like the diversity that makes up this city. I know it's a, a commitment, but we, we want to see it, obviously.
Mayor, Councilmember Gallego, we are fully committed to having the most diverse department that we can. Admittedly, we are at the beginning stages of trying to ramp up. We haven't had a class in several years. We will look at both. We will look at both traditional and non-traditional strategies in order to do that. I think in the most recent past, with the reorganization within the police department, the placement of Marcel Franklin in the police department, the placement of Commander Kurtinbach in his new role, the beefing up of the recruiting staff, that staff is diverse in and of itself, and the ongoing communication with the city manager's office, we will be talking about how to be more diverse, how to touch communities that heretofore that have had issues with wanting to be police officers. So I mean, we have to face that fact. We're fighting an uphill battle in some of the communities because of the relationship historically, and so we want to attack that head-on. You do have our commitment, Mayor, and councilmembers, that we will do everything we can to make sure that we have a department that reflects the community that it serves.
I would gladly make that as part of the motion.
Make that part, and I'll also ask Councilman Nowakowski that we get this item as quickly and as often as possible in front of your subcommittees, that we adopt a specific policy relative to...
Yeah, I'd like to call for the question.
Oh, Mayor, come on. You know I was going to put a motion on the table.
Oh, I didn't know.
I'd like to do that.
All right, we have a call for the question. Do we have a second on call for the question?
Second.
We have a motion for call for the question. We have a second call for the question.
Here's where, let me add some debate on that.
All in, just a second. We're going to see if we want to call this question or not. Do we do this roll call, or do we not do this roll call, call for the question? We've always had a healthy debate on this item, please.
Call for the question can be by voice vote.
Roll call.
That's what you can't...
Councilman DeCecio.
No, and Mayor?
Councilman Gallego.
Yes.
Councilman Gates.
Nice job, Thelda. You just basically messed up with the police guys.
Councilman Nowakowski.
Guaranteed to them.
Yeah.
Good job, Thelda. You did it again.
Oh, well, you and I just...
I think we're going to take a vote right now on this, on this call for the question, please.
I'm sorry, Councilman Nowakowski.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Pastore.
Yes.
Councilman Valenzuela.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Waring.
No.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, so I think the call for the question passes, so now we're going to vote on Councilwoman Williams' motion. We had a motion and a second.
As amended.
As amended, thank you. Roll call.
Councilman DeCecio.
No.
Councilwoman Gallego.
Yes.
Councilman Nowakowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pastore.
Yes.
Councilman Valenzuela.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Waring.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, that passes on a seven-to-one vote. Congratulations, Councilwoman Williams and members of the Transportation Subcommittee for your leadership. There being no further items before this council, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you for your patience.